Every book you read, you've got to do something with it. If it's structured like that, then that will kill reading faster than anything. And so, you should have large amounts of reading where you don't have to do anything with the book, and then targeted books that you do stuff around. Otherwise, you're going to kill kids who want... Why do I want to read a book if I've got to write a book report on it? Why do I want to read a book if I've got to answer questions on it? Why do I want... I want to read a book because of the book and the enjoyment of the book. So, when you say independent reading, is that taken into account?
So, independent reading is sort of the end goal. So, you heard Angela mention the gradual release of responsibility. So, we want to get kids to independent reading, and we feel that that is a... The committee feels like that has been a missing component in the tools that have been accessible for teachers in the classroom as part of comprehensive core programs is resources for independent readers that go beyond just at grade level, one grade level above, and one grade level below. So, it's an important component. It is not the end-all-to-be-all in terms of an instructional strategy. It's what you want to get kids to, and having resources for that, it was an important consideration within the adoption.
If you're in the sixth grade, going down and choosing a book to read that you want to read and reading that, that's a key component of sixth-grade reading. Huge component.
Can you ask a question?
Director Buell, I could also add that the professional development around independent reading is really specific because there are practices that we would want to see teachers engaging in in order to make sure that independent reading is really purposeful and focused. And one of those is having conferring, is conferring with students. And so, making sure that you have regular opportunities as a teacher to confer with children around the books that they're reading. And that's not only to just do an informal assessment and make sure that they're really understanding what they're reading, but then there's like a, I guess for lack of a better word, a little bit of accountability there to make sure that they are actually engaged in reading during independent reading time. And independent reading is something that needs to be built up over time. A teacher would never, you know, go into the beginning of the year expecting kids to just sit silently and reading, you know, for long periods of time. That's something that the stamina is built up over the...
Depending on the school, though. Some schools already built that stamina up in the first grade.
Possibly. I mean, it could, and that's kind of the design of the PD and the program is that we can differentiate for teachers and we can make sure that we are providing the teachers the PD that they need for where they're at.
If you've got two books, and you're reading Book A over here and answering questions on it, and you're reading Book B over here and not answering questions on it, both of these should be part of your reading program.
Yeah.
And is that the case? Because this is independent reading that you're answering questions and doing things with. This is reading for enjoyment where you're improving your reading immensely by choosing what you like, getting into books you like, and because you're now doing a lot of reading. So, this, if it goes into this, it kills it. I want to make sure that this isn't going into this, that we understand that a lot of the reading that children do doesn't get anything. We don't mess with it at all. We just let them read and off they go as children get older.
Can I just clarify that even though Steve is using my pad, I don't necessarily agree with what you said.
Okay. So, let me get a quick answer, and then I think I have... I may have one more question. That's it.
So, within the literacy book, within the core program, I agree that kids need to be able to read for enjoyment on their own, and that's an important piece. Accountable, independent reading is part of the core program.
Sure, I just don't want it to go like this and one destroys the other.
And they could do that with an element of choice and self-selection and still have an element where the teacher is getting information about their progress.
Sure. Yeah, but it's not that when you read those books, you have to do something with those books necessarily. Maybe you're in the middle, the teacher maybe pulls you up once every sentence and works and says, "How are you doing? What book are you reading?" But maybe this other book, they don't. I just want to make sure we're all clear on where I'm clear. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much, you guys. I really appreciate what you're doing, and I think it has the chance to really be wonderful for our kids.
Pam?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First of all, I just want to say thank you. I'm not on the Teaching and Learning Committee, and so, the depth that you went into in your presentation, while usually I'm not a big fan for huge presentations at board meetings, this was really good and very helpful for me as I'm working toward making a decision. I also want to thank Julie for the conversations that we've had around this kind of thing as well. And I just want to say, I'm very impressed with the process and the depth that you went through in order to figure out what would be best for Portland Public Schools and our kids. I was particularly interested in your comment around the list from ODE and the lack of cultural relevance in those materials. And I guess if that's exactly what... If I'm not putting words in your mouth, but it seems to me like somebody should be talking to ODE about that as well.
It's probably the publishers.
Yeah, part of it is publishers. That's true. But they could do the same thing we're doing, so.
The publishers, I'm just sorry to interrupt. The publishers do get feedback from us throughout the evaluation process.
Right. And I know, you know, through my service on the Council of Great City Schools, they're going through a process of looking at curriculum as well for cultural relevance and putting stars next to the publishers who have that so our school districts know that in the future. And then the other thing is around the pilot and data that you're gathering. I'm really excited that you're doing that. My question has to do with, you know, what are we... How are we going about that? And particularly, how long before we'll do, take a look at that data and determine whether we need to make some tweaks? Or if in the end, it looks like it's not working, what's our next step after that? Or are we trying not to think about that?
It's been a long process. As soon as the recommendation is moved forward, we would go into negotiations, get the materials, and then start that whole process of what the evaluation would look like in terms of implementation, and then what sort of academic metrics, both formative and summative, over time.
Well, let me then just clarify the point that we've discussed before, that what we currently use for measuring reading skills, DIBELS, which is not... It's got a lot of bad rap to it, but it really does an efficient job of measuring.
And we're still using it, yes.
So, if we continue to use that, I mean, that would be done on a quarterly basis so that you have short-term instruction and force correct and raise that you need to.
Formative.
So, if we continue to keep that, that's going to also help guide.
So, our idea is to gather the data, analyze it, make tweaks, see where we need to move, and then get our tip.
Yeah.
Great. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Paul?
Yep.
Okay. Katie?
Good.
Okay. We'll now consider Resolution 5275, grades PK through five, language, arts curriculum, material adoption. Do I have a motion and a second?
To move. I'll second.
Moved by Director Knowles and seconded by Director Constan. Do you adopt the Resolution 5275? Ms. Powell?
Yes, we have six.
Okay.
Lisa Kane and Elizabeth Skorodov.
I work as a literacy coach at Woodlawn this year. I was placed there this year as one of the focus and priority literacy coaches. And this is a great day to be talking about this as a coach because today's the day we looked at our data. Today was our 100 percent or our data meeting in Teams. And I'll show that to you later. I didn't... I emailed it as a PDF, and first of all, it's stunning. It's absolutely stunning. And where it's most stunning is in the 50% of the kids that were not there at the beginning. It's all kids moved, but the kids who weren't getting it moved almost all of them above. And it's not just... And here comes the coaching part. It's not just overall. It was the place that we identified as a PLC, those kids needing, and that was phonemic awareness because we focused on our foundational skills and looked at what the kids in front of us needed. So, today, we opened our PLC with a very simple question. It was what worked because it worked. And I wanted to share the answers of my team. Aubrey was on my team. And it was very clear from the data, too, that it wasn't just the focus, but our data this year showed significant difference from previous years. One of the DIBELS reports you can look at looks at what you call a cross-year plot. So, you can look back for several years, and it is completely different what we had this year versus previous years on phonemic awareness, which is what we actually focused upon. But here's what they said. What was the difference? Number one, having someone there to refine and to keep kids at the center. Every single meeting that we had as a PLC, which is part of what we have rolling forward, was looking at data. And I don't want to use the word data because frequently what that turns into is a color or a statistic and not what the kid needs next. We kept it at the level of what the kid needs next, and we built capacity in our staff. We constantly asked ourselves, what do we need to know and what do we need to learn? So, that was a part of this model going forward. Oh, gosh, I can't believe that's blinking at me already. This depends on developing a skilled teaching force, and I believe that the commitment is there. The other thing that I wanted to point out was what was over there in the corner, and that's the collaborative input of all of your skilled people in PPS. I have never seen such a skilled group of people coming together. I want to quickly talk about a cocktail conversation on Saturday night with a PPS speech pathologist. And when I told her that we're going, moving forward with the program, she said, "Well, we can help with that phonemic awareness." And I said, "I'm really excited about the difference between phonemes, graphemes, and morphemes." And she said, "We can help with that." So, what we're doing is we're putting together a program to support teachers in responding to children's needs. That's what's different about this. This is not an adoption of a program. This is adoption of a system that meets every child where they are. We're changing our perspective, and our perspective is front and center kids and having the capacity in our teachers to meet those needs.
My name's Elizabeth Skorodov. I was told to spell that for you. S-K-O-R-O-H-O-D-O-V, as in Victor. I am a kindergarten teacher at Atkinson Elementary School. I came into this process with the focus of really wanting to make sure whatever... Hoping that I could help influence whatever the adoption is, that we can keep in mind the kids that are struggling and the kids that are on the dyslexia spectrum. That was my... That's my passion. That's from personal passion and professional passion. So, I went into this hoping to guide that and check it out, make sure it's there. I piloted units of study and the guided reading with Leon Low and Scholastic. And I can say that all of my students were engaged, all of them, from my lowest to my highest. All the programs reached all of my students. It was repetitive. It built upon prior lessons and prior knowledge, which helped all of my kids. So, I could reach them regardless of where they were. I could... There was always an entry place for them because it was always repeating and building and repeating and building. The entire... Both the reading and the writing program were student-centered at all times. I was able to work with those kids on an individual level and also on a small group level, which meant that I could celebrate them and nurture them where they were and continue to get them inspired to keep going. Let's see here. And I can honestly say that all of my students at this point feel that they are writers and they are readers. I shared a little celebration with Alma while we were sitting there with one of my little struggling students that is high-risk, high-high-risk. Came to me at spring break. She's homeless. She is definitely kind of locked within. And when she came to me, she cannot write her name. She is now, and I'm continuing the program. I continued with all of this, and so, we're still using the program. And she came to me yesterday, and she's writing letters, willingly writing letters on her own. "Mrs. S., can I write on the whiteboard?" Waiting for, you know, to walk down to the office at the end of the day. "Absolutely." Dear, dear, oh, ah. And she wrote it, and she's like, "Wait, I have to say it's from me, from Mariah." And it was beautiful, and it was several sentences. It was amazing. I left it up there, and I walked her to the office, and she waited for her big sister to pick her up. And that's this program. It inspired her to see herself as a writer and as a reader. She had to use all that phonics and phonemic awareness to get there. It was beautiful. And she's a writer. And later today, I said, "You know what? You're a fantastic writer." She believes it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have Jenny Smith and Robin Malden.
I currently teach third grade at Sutton. This is my second year in PPS, but I had 11 years in another metro district where I taught kindergarten, second grade, and where I was also a literacy coach. And everything that I was going to say has already been said. We've talked about curriculums that allow teachers to be decision-makers. We've talked about curriculums that allow me using robust assessments to determine where my kids are so that I can meet my third graders who come to me reading at an early kindergarten level because they do. And the components of this adoption allow me to meet the needs of my variety of learners in my classroom, in my classroom every day. And that is something that I couldn't do with Scott Forzeman or any other comprehensive core curriculum that I have used in my teaching career. I am able to look at my students and see what their needs are and give them what they need to move them forward, whether it is systematic phonics instruction or whether it's comprehension work, as so many of my English language learners are working on. And though I was going to talk about flexibility and inclusivity and how what my students have come away with, that is, an ability to generate writing instead of respond to prompts, an ability to generate their own thinking and questioning instead of responding to who is the main character. My students are able to have a conversation about character traits that they are developing on their own, which is the real work that writers and thinkers and readers do in life. And instead, I want to share two anecdotes about my students because I believe in passion. And when I think about what this means to my kids, I think about what it means to Eduardo, who decided he wants to go by Eddie MG. Eduardo can decode. He can read words. He can... I can give him his paper, and he can figure out what the letters and sounds mean to almost any word. And for three years, Eduardo has been flying just below appropriate levels of grade level comprehension. So, all year long, I've been trying in every possible way I can to convince Eduardo or Eddie MG that he wants to read for a purpose. And when we started piloting the writing, the reading units of study, we started reading a book called Because of Winn-Dixie. And if you spend any time in an elementary school classroom or have a child of that age, you'll know it's a very passionate story about a little girl whose mother has abandoned her. And it's the story of how she kind of comes to terms with her mother. And we were focused on the notion that characters have struggles and stories, and that those characters make us who we are, or their struggles make us who we are as characters and stories, but they also make us who we are as people. And Eddie MG came to me one day, and he said, "You know, I haven't actually been reading, have I?" And I said, "No, hate to break it to you, friend, but you've been reading a lot of words, but you haven't actually been reading." And he said, "I figured it out. I was reading Magic Treehouse, and I realized that Jack and Annie, that they're always going to argue because they're brother and sister, and one of them's always going to try and do something that gets the other one in trouble, and I want to read them all." And so, here he is in third grade, having decided just recently that he actually wants to read a book. So, he goes to my library, my classroom library, because if you know anything about me, you know I love books. And he goes to the Magic Treehouse tubs, and he pulls out a stack of them, and he takes them to his desk. And now, every day, he lines them up at the beginning of our time to read, and he looks and he decides, "I read the three chapters yesterday of this book, and today, I'm going to read the chapters of this book." And so, he's systematically convincing himself that he's a reader because that's what readers do. Readers make decisions about what they read, and they think about what they read, and they take that information home. And his first communion was a week ago, and it came to me on...
I think you need to wrap it up here pretty quickly.
I can't. It came to me, and he said, "I..." We talked about the author Kate DiCamillo, who wrote a book that was recently published called Ramey Nightingale. And he said, "You know, I got money from my first communion, and I told my mom and dad they could buy that book at Amazon, and so, I spent my first communion money on getting that book, and I really want to read it when we read it in our class." And that's the passion that I want my kids to have as readers and learners and writers.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robin Malden, and I'm a second and third grade teacher at Arlita School. This is my 20th year in the classroom. I got a little stuck saying that number, but 15 with Portland Public. And I specifically wanted to talk about some of the things that you've brought up tonight about the role of professional development for teachers as part of this new reading adoption that's going forward. The new reading adoption is going to bring change to our classrooms. And as we all know, change is very hard. And in my opinion, the best way to facilitate that change is using teachers as coaches in our schools. An instructional coach, their job is to promote meaningful and lasting change in a teacher's practice, and that has direct impact on student outcomes. An effective literacy coach provides professional development all through the school year. I know that I've gone to many wonderful workshops either in the summer or before school begins. And once I start implementing new ideas in my classroom, I sometimes have additional questions or I want to know what to do next. And that opportunity isn't always there once the workshop is over. A literacy coach that is embedded in a school will know the teachers, and they will know the students. And a coach can provide targeted professional development that can be adapted to fit the needs of the teachers in our schools. That kind of targeted development will lead to increased teacher capacity, which will also have a positive effect on student learning. Also, a literacy coach can encourage a culture of intentional collaboration. Teachers have always swapped ideas and resources and supported each other. However, that is not enough. We need to have intentional conversations about student learning. A coach can provide a framework for looking at student work and data, discussing what students need, and helping to develop a plan to meet those needs. This kind of intentional collaboration will result in classroom instruction that is more effective. And I would just like to end by saying, sorry, I'm really excited about this authentic and rigorous and meaningful literacy experience that every child in every classroom in Portland Public Schools will start to have with this new adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Price and Gwen Sullivan.
Hi, I'm Caleb Price, P-R-I-C-E, and I'm a second grade teacher at Harrison Park. I had the privilege of piloting units of study reading, units of study writing, and then the Leon Low and Scholastics for guided reading. I did the pilot with the other three second grade teachers at Harrison Park, and we all, after the pilot, had the same feeling that this is really what we need for our students. I just want to talk about three things. The structure of the program, the ability to meet all of my students' needs with the program, and then also the engagement. I'm a second-year teacher, which I've heard from a lot of very experienced teachers. And so, as a second-year teacher, the structure that units of study provided was really valuable and very helpful. As a new teacher getting into with Scott Forzeman, it's a lot, and I have seen Scott Forzeman carried out in so many different ways in different classrooms where units of study gives you this structure that I think that after maybe five years of teaching without this exposure, I would have, like, figured out that structure, but units of study just gave it to me. Will give it to a new teacher at the beginning. And that structure is so valuable for my students. To give a little context, more than half of my students are English language learners. And at the beginning of the year, half of my students were intensive in reading. And so, that structure is so important for my students. And it's every day, the workshop looks the same, and then down to each lesson is... They have each 10-minute mini lesson is structured the same with the same language so that the students can pick up on the cues for when the teaching point, that one thing that the students are supposed to walk away with, they know when to queue up and listen to that. And so, the... And with the independent reading, it's very... It's not just students reading books. Each lesson is very intentional, and students have a very specific purpose when they go to do their independent reading. And they get to do where they're reading books of choice, but they're doing meaningful activities, like my students were... Got to know their characters through acting them out. So, they were taking sticky notes, and they were writing thought bubbles for what their characters thought. And they were having authentic interactions with their books and enjoying it. So, they were doing writing, and they were doing that work, but it was meaningful, and they enjoyed it. Scott Forzeman, below level, on level, and above level. At the beginning of the year, half of my students couldn't... Could not access the below-level curriculum. And so, I was... And all of my colleagues at my school are just constantly trying to find all of these other things to supplement. And with units of study, it was a lot easier to meet all their needs. And then, I won't tell any anecdotes, but the engagement was huge. Shared reading for my English language learners, where we all every day spent 15 to 20 minutes reading a book that is a high-interest book, gave my English language learners who don't speak English at home an opportunity to speak English and to practice their inflection and where everybody's talking, so they're not, like, put on the spot, but they're getting to, like, get really involved and, you know, do the big bad wolf and then do the, like, little pigs. So, meaningful. And when I say engaging, I don't mean fun, but I mean relevant and meaningful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other board discussion, we'll take a vote.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers who came out tonight and stuck it out. I think some of you look pretty sleepy, so you're going to have a hard day tomorrow. But I really appreciate the effort. I also want to thank Chris and his staff. This was one of those things where, you know, well into the process, there was a fair amount of concern or discussion raised by parents about what was happening. And, you know, that's pretty scary because they invested a lot of time to get to this point. And the thing that I really appreciated was how polite and nimble the staff were in responding. And, you know, this presentation tonight, although it was way too long, and it was the second time I saw it, and it's being made longer now, it was... It really credibly and thoughtfully addressed the concerns that were raised. So, that was great. And then, I just want to thank Julie because I know there was a fair amount of, you know, behind-the-scenes, how to make this work, talking about the pilot. I really appreciate the emphasis on, "They're going to be measures. They're going to be reported. We're going to look at them." And so...
And we're all going to hope that they're great.
Right.
And you've got the tools.
Right. And so, I'm confident that we're off on the right foot. So, thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Mike.
I just want to say, it really feels good to do something that is so promising for our students, but also seems so rewarding for our teachers.
Oh, and one thing, I want to thank all the parents that got involved, too. Thank you.
That's it. Okay, great. So, the board will now vote on Resolution 5275. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Davidson, no, any abstentions? Resolution 5275 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Voting yes.
And actually, I also want to add my thanks to everybody who worked on these committees. This was a very long and intensive process. And it, like, I'm just impressed with how many people were on all three and piloted and then were, saw it all the way through to this point. And it was really powerful tonight to listen to you all do this presentation. It was awesome. So, thank, and it was great to have a board meeting that was all about teaching and learning. So, I'm just gonna say that made me really happy. So, thanks, you guys.
Okay, great. So we will now recess the board from its regular meeting and convene as the Budget Committee. And I know there's students here that want to testify, so I think we'll introduce the item. Carol will give a brief introduction and then we'll get right to testimony. The Board as the Budget Committee has held three public hearings on the proposed 21617 budget. And so Superintendent Smith, why don't you provide a few comments?
And I'm gonna try and keep my comments brief and mostly about what the task is before us tonight and where we are in the process. So, you're welcome to take us any place I'll be in that, but I'm gonna try to keep it tight. Okay, so the board has in front of you tonight what is the draft approved budget, which, and a memo that describes the changes that have been made since you received the proposed budget back in March. So you received the proposed budget, received a framework on March 8th. You received a proposed budget on March 29th. The primary changes that are reflected in this new document, the draft document you have tonight, are technical changes. So the memo outlines that changes are made for the issuance of bonds. Some, like reflection of what shows up in the capital, facilities capital fund and what stays in the general fund. So adjustments where we have more information to refine how it shows up in the budget have been made.
Okay, they've worked really hard. They deserve that.
They get to go celebrate. That's awesome.
They better be going to bed.
I know, but this is worth celebrating. And then the other ones are ones again where we may have shown you something as a lump that now shows up in departmental budgets or in the right departmental budgets. So those kind of technical adjustments have been made in this document. What is not in this document yet, on March, on the 17th, you have, there was a work session where the board identified further changes they would like to see made, handed it back to the staff, did some prioritizing amongst yourselves, handed it back to the staff to say, what are these things that we could make happen? We then provided you with a worksheet that showed the prioritization from the work session you had, what are possible sources identified. Okay, here are things we believe could be covered within the existing proposed budget in a fund that's already identified or by shifting something. Secondly, that we would actually make a change to this document, and I'll tell you how that would occur here in a minute, or that we might consider it as a budget amendment in December or January once we hit that point and we know what our ending fund balance is and how much money we have to work with, or consider it for the next biennium. So those are the recommendations we're making to you. Tonight's discussion, wherever, whatever changes you land upon as the Budget Committee, those changes we would make by the June 21st budget document. So we wouldn't make them in the resolution here tonight, so you're not gonna be tangled in making them. You would say to us, here are the things that we'd like to, additional changes we'd like to see. You would pass the approved budget as it is with direction about further changes you want to see that we bring back to you in the document you have, will have before you on the 21st. Does that make sense to you? Because, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
No, that doesn't make sense. So the thing that I'm confused about is how does that relate to the mandate to deliver a budget to the TSCC? I think it's by June 1 or 2.
It is, and I may need David to get up and do a little more description that's technical about TSCC. But, and I will let you, go ahead and do that, David.
So we have to deliver, we have to submit an approved budget to TSCC. And what, when, assuming that you vote to approve a budget in some form tonight, that's what we will do. Because the nature of our process as an entity is that we have, the board is the Budget Committee, we don't have a separate independent Budget Committee. And because of that, the TSCC has a review obligation and function that they perform on behalf of taxpayers. And so we submit the budgets to them, they do their review, they hold a hearing, and they come back and do that before you as the governing body adopt a budget. And so that's the sequence in the time.
Yeah, and so what I don't understand is we've had several discussions over the past couple of weeks about, and I'll talk more about this later, but asking for more information, talking about the deadline for making a decision, which I believe we've been led to believe is tonight. And so it's confusing to me that I have amendments, I have things I want to add to the budget, I have information requests that still haven't been fulfilled, so I can make decisions. So does it mean now that I have, between now and June 21st, to continue to lobby for these changes? It doesn't make sense to me. David?
So you can, as the board, when you adopt the budget, you can make changes to the budget.
Are there, are there boundaries around the changes that you can make?
Yes.
Can you explain those?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
So the legal limitation is that having approved the budget, you cannot make a change to any of the appropriation levels of more than 10%. In the general, the only, that would be, that could be a problem in some of the other funds. But in the general fund, the appropriation levels are by instruction, support services, and things like that. And those are large numbers. And it's not completely impossible that you would make changes of that magnitude, but nothing that anybody has talked about comes close to that level of change.
Can you explain so that everyone understands? Because I think this is really important for the public to understand. What is the range within which we can make changes?
The legal limitation is that we cannot, between approved and adopted, we cannot change any of those appropriation levels in any fund by more than 10%.
I am requesting that you provide a document by tomorrow that specifies the amount of money. That means what does 10% mean? Does it mean $10 million in one fund, $20 million in another?
Attached to, attached to the resolution to approve the budget is a chart, a table, that shows by fund the appropriation level. So in the general fund, the appropriation level for instruction is 331 million and change. 10% of that is $33 million. For support services, it's $237 million. 10% of that is $23.7 million. So those are the parameters, those are the limits.
So the range is somewhere around 20 to 30 million dollars?
In the general fund.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, to the best of my knowledge, that is the place that,
Where all the contention is, or?
That's my understanding based on what I've seen and heard so far.
Is on, is in the instruction or the support?
Both of those.
Okay.
I mean, the kind of things I have heard board members talk about could impact money either being added to one of those or moving from one to the other.
Right, so that's very helpful. Thank you.
Carol, anything else?
I think that's the primary thing. The other thing you received as an item was just the spreadsheet that reflected your discussion the other day, which I think is primarily the document I would imagine you're gonna work off of this evening. And in order to give further direction to the staff about changes you'd like to see when we bring you something back on the 21st.
Okay.
So, back to you.
All right, so what I would like to do is get the motion on the board and then hear some testimony, starting with students. So, we will now consider Resolution 5274 as a Budget Committee approval of the fiscal year 21617 budget imposition of property taxes. Do I have a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Sparza Brown. And Ms. Powell, can we call up the?
Yes, we have Nate Robinson and Dylan White.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
So, we'll, so we'll be able to submit amendments after the public testimony?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We had students who've been there all night long.
Hi, my name is Dylan White and I am a senior at Franklin High School. I'm gonna be graduating June 6th this year. And I am deciding between PSU and Warner Pacific. And I'm on a successful path for my future. And the only reason I'm on this path is because it's man right here, Mr. Leary, and the I Am Academy. I've learned a lot from Mr. Leary. And he has given me confidence and the knowledge to be successful in my future. So I'd just like to thank you, thank Mr. Leary.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nate Robinson. All right, hello, my name is Nate Robinson. I'm a senior at Franklin High School. I would just have to say, to keep it, I would not be graduating this year without Mr. Leary. I watched last year as a lot of my teachers gave up on me because I started having family problems and I couldn't make it to school as much and I had a lot to do. And Mr. Leary just kept me through it. He kept me on top of it. And the I Am Academy program, I started having problems with teachers and they served as advocates. They would go to my classes with me and see, check what was going on to make sure everything was all right. Or if I had a problem with a teacher, I would voice it to Mr. Leary and he would take it higher up. He would make sure my voice was actually heard on a higher level. And I would just like to thank him for all the hard work and let him know I'll be going to a Lane Community College next year.
My name is Morgan Henley. I'm also a senior at Franklin High School. I'm graduating on June 6th. And I will be attending Manchester University on a scholarship. Mr. Leary has served as a father to me since my father passed away when I was in seventh grade. And without Mr. Leary's guidance and several opportunities that him and Ms. Bartley and Mr. Fraser have given to me, I was able to receive the Young Gifted and Black Award this year, which is something I never thought I'd get because I've never gotten an academic award for anything. If it weren't for those three people, especially Mr. Leary pushing me to actually saying that you are pretty good at this school stuff. I mean, everyone's always said, oh, this is the best he can do, but Leary's the only one saying, no, you're better than this and you should be doing better than this. I know you're just coasting through. And he's, I mean, he's made me like the senior member of our group over at Franklin. And he has me looking out for everybody in the whole group. I got my fingers in everyone's jar, like, hey, what are you doing here? What are you doing here? What are you doing here? And he's basically, me and him together have been able to help shape some of the minds of the younger African-American students at our school. And I'm going, even though the school's almost out, I'm going around asking African-American kids, hey, can you wake up, can you wake up at 6:30 in the morning and get to school at 7:00 so you can have breakfast with us? We'd love to have you at breakfast. We talk about great issues. And I don't think, there are a lot of kids who are at our school who probably wouldn't graduate if it weren't for Mr. Leary. There are kids, sophomores and juniors who don't want to go to class, but Mr. Leary makes sure they go to class. He comes out with a kind heart and makes sure that, he makes sure that he actually cares. He looks at all of us as equals. He doesn't look at us as young, like low-hanging. He looks at us all as equals. He tells it to us straight. He doesn't abridge anything. I appreciate that. When we're at school, people like to talk to us like we don't know what's going on in the world. But all three of us, we're 18. Those people, they're almost adults. So we need to talk to them like we're adults. And he treats us like adults and makes sure we can make decisions on our own and helps us with these decisions. I know Dylan for sure wouldn't be where he is right now without Mr. Leary. I know dang well my guy right here wouldn't be where he is. This dude, this dude was managing three jobs over the summer so he could help provide for his family. He almost dropped out of school to help his mom pay the bills. But with Mr. Leary's help, he didn't have to do that. And he got me a job so I can save money so when I'm at college, I don't have to have my mom send me money because I don't want her sending me money. I want to provide for myself. That's been a goal of mine to provide for my moms since I was little. And with Mr. Leary, with Mr. Leary, that goal's gonna be possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Farce of delay, you guys.
Harlem Atwood and Morgan Yamamoto?
Hello, my name is Harlem Atwood. I go to Roosevelt High School. Mr. Leary has pulled me out of multiple depressions throughout my career in high school. My sophomore year, I had a 2.4 GPA and now I have a 3.4 GPA. And I'm going to San Diego State to major in biochemistry. And, I'm under the impression that one of the factors contributing to I Am Academy being shut down is because it gives an unfair advantage to black students over other kids. And I would like to say that, though, I Am Academy was designed for black students. It does not exclude students of any other race. This is because the enlightenment and inspiration that individuals attain through I Am Academy can benefit anyone regardless of their racial identity. And it's obvious that black students have been and are to this day dropping out relatively at a higher rate than others. Though the installation of I Am Academy has made great progress in PPS, the dropout rates of black students still remain at the highest of any other racial group. And I'm puzzled as to whether you all are trying to instill equity or equality amongst PPS students because it is evident that black students are at no advantage opposed to other students of other races. I'm also aware that funds is a factor that you guys are considering. After conducting a few simple calculations, the cost per kid, per breakfast is $3.25. Yet this, this calculation only included the officially enrolled kids, not the kids that Mr. Leary welcomes with open arms to break bread with us. So realistically, the cost per breakfast per student fluctuates between $2.16 and $1.06. And that's between 150 to 200 kids. And it amazes me that you would take time out of your day to audit us over these small expenses when you have multimillion dollar losses to attend to.
Thank you.
That'll be all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Morgan Yamamoto. I'm a senior at Roosevelt High School, uh, at Roosevelt High School as well. I'm gonna be attending San Diego State next year in the fall as well, and I'm gonna be majoring in business. And to my knowledge, one of the like considering factors is that the program is putting black males at a higher advantage than other students. But I'd like to say that there are real life prevalent disadvantages that are conjoined with being a black male in our world. I have a list of statistics, but the US has the highest population of incarcerated people at 756 incarcerations per 100,000 people. When broken down into gender and race, there are 706 white males incarcerated per every 100,000 people, while there are 4,749 black male incarcerations for every 100,000 people. Of the 2.2 million people who are incarcerated in the United States, black people make up, or black males make up 900,000 of those incarcerations. And so that's just a statistic I wanted to throw out there. And then even today, when I was here for my friend's award ceremony for the valedictorian, award ceremony or whatever, I was looking at the brochure and like predominantly white schools like Lincoln and Cleveland had a list of like 10 or 15 valedictorians while Roosevelt and Jefferson, which are the most diverse schools in PPS, had three altogether combined. So, yeah, and for, my personal experience with the program, although I don't actively participate in all of the meetings and events, I can say that Mr. Leary has helped like successful women like myself and my friend Troy Eaglestaff, who was here at the valedictorian award ceremony. women like myself and my friend Troy Eaglestaff, who was here at the valedictorian award ceremony, he helped us get jobs as juniors in high school that were paying over minimum wage, rates at over minimum wage, helped us get those jobs. And she is going to Stanford next year and she won the Gates Millennium Scholarship. So, she's, yeah, she's gotten a lot of help, moral help as well as myself from Mr. Leary. And I'd like to thank him for that. And so, because of all the positivity I've seen and experience coming from this program, I'm strongly in favor for keeping the I Am Academy in place for my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerome Bush. I'm a senior at Roosevelt High School. I recently, well, not recently, my sophomore year, I moved from California, from living with my mom, to Oregon and moving with my dad and my stepmom. Moving a lot after my parents got divorced in California was really hard for me. I never knew how to stay put or settle or find out what home was. I still believe California's home to me, but when I came to Roosevelt, the first day I was there, Mr. Leary extended an open hand when he noticed I was sitting alone at lunch by myself because I didn't know anybody. I've never really had any trouble with school, but Mr. Leary was always that one person that helped me be a leader, then a follower, and to carry other people with me and have them be leaders as well. And that's not just saying with just African-American males, that's everybody else too at Roosevelt. Our graduation rate really was pretty low when I got there. To my knowledge, it's sixty-five percent as a now, which is great to, which is pretty great from where we were. Mr. Leary has provided us an unlimited amount of opportunities, business-wise, to help us get ready for college. Me personally, I went on two college trips with Mr. Leary, the only two college trips I've ever been on and ever had the opportunity to go on, which was Oregon State and University of Oregon. Harlem and I are football players for Roosevelt also. And Mr. Leary knowing that, and knowing that we are both passionate about our sport, we were able to connect with players at Oregon State and them talk to us about their personal experiences and their major. One of the seniors that are graduating this year, he was a business major, which is I wanted to major in as well. And then after that, go to law school. He was really passionate and glad to see that there is an advocate for a predominant, not predominant, but a very diverse school as Roosevelt, as such Mr. Leary and I Am Academy. And this program has really benefited everybody that has came to it and everybody that has participated in it and everybody that has been a part of the I Am Academy. Not just students, teachers as well and college students as well also. And this program has been nothing but a benefit for me and my friends and a huge impact on my life and it's changed me for the better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carson Doyle. I'm a senior at Roosevelt. I am seventeen and I will be attending Clark College next year to play baseball. Just to really close this out, Mr. Leary has been a big piece in all of our lives for however long we've known him. He has set us up with jobs, as we've all stated. I myself, my first paycheck I ever received was from the DA's office as a fifteen-year-old after Mr. Leary hooked me up with an interview there, along with several other students who weren't even I Am Academy students, who just came to him with issues of needing a job and he was able to assist them. Mr. Leary is, everything he's done for this group, everything that he's done for Portland and North Portland in general, has been for the betterment of everybody. And this is a program that deserves to be funded, that deserves everything that is received and deserves everything that it should receive in the future. We are, we are a small, extremely small amount of the people who have received, who have earned things through the I Am Academy and have gone on to be successful and will go on to be successful. And this is a group that, this is a person in a group that cultivates greatness through confidence and uplifting. And it's not, it's not easy. It's not easy getting up at six, six-thirty in the morning, going to school to be there at seven, to learn before you start learning. Yeah, there's good breakfast, yeah, there's good stuff to learn, but we could easily sleep in for another hour or two. It's easier, we could easily just not come to school at all if that was the case. But Mr. Leary, he inspires us every day, whether he's there or not, whether you're talking to him, whether you're talking to him every day or not, to be there because you know that he's there supporting you and you know that he's there to help you. And that's all anyone can really ask for, whether it's through programs like Step Up or I Am Academy or after-school tutors. That's all you can really ask for, somebody to be there in your corner fighting for you every day. And that's what we have at Roosevelt as we have at Franklin. And as far as I'm concerned, there's not a school in the world that doesn't deserve to have someone like this, someone who's going to fight for you like he does every day. The people up here with me have laid out a great deal of things that he's done for us. And I'll just keep it short by saying that this is a program that deserves to be funded and deserves to be around for a long time, long after we've all moved on and started the lives of our own. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve.
Yeah, I'm extremely confused. No one that I know on this board has ever even considered suggesting to take out this program in any shape, sense or form. Anybody?
We did have a discussion of it in the fall.
Yeah, but no one even came close to suggesting that. Ray Leary is one of the finest citizens in this city. I mean, your testimony, this is what he's about. This is inspiring kids in Roosevelt and Franklin. That's what this program's about. Lenzel, has anybody suggested to you to eliminate this program? Nobody's, nobody's thinking of eliminating this program that I know? Anybody up here thinking of eliminating this program? No, no, we're not. No, this is, this is, this is one of the outstanding men. We are so lucky to have him to work with the students that we have. We understand how lucky we are. And I asked for an audit of all of these programs and I spent hours and hours and hours looking at all the contracts in the city that we have. That's part of my job. I'm sure other people spend a lot of time doing that. That's our job, is to look at everything, to see what the contracts are, to make sure. And we've found a lot of times that the contracts that we were writing were not very good and we want to tighten them up to make sure that that gets tightened up. That's part of our job. We have a, it's not just our job as school board members, but it's our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that the money is being well-spent. And in this case, my conclusion is this is a great place to spend money. I don't, sorry you guys came and sat around and I'm even sorry that I have a speech on some other stuff here and it's getting late. And these guys don't always listen so well if it gets late, so, but...
So, that means you'll wrap it up?
Yeah, go back and forget about it and have a good day tomorrow. And thank you for coming out and testifying because it tells us how good, it reinforces what we already knew, which is this is an excellent program.
I just want to reinforce and thank all of you for being here and for sharing with us. I mean, it takes courage to come to do this too, so I really appreciate it. And I'm so proud of all of you sharing your stories and to hear what your future plans are. So, it's great. Thank you and thank you for the program.
I like when you, I like when you made the distinction between what I've received and you corrected yourself to say what I've earned. So, good job.
Pretty cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You were awesome.
Thank you.
Good luck to all of you.
So, I'd also say thank you to you guys, but I also want to say thank you to Mr. Leary who's sitting over here in the front row for the fabulous program that you've run and and how I hope that you'll continue to do this program in the future. So, thank you very much for your work with all these young people.
We have Chris Frazier.
Now, if you have to get up at six-thirty in the morning, you guys should go home. We're not trying to show you away, but hey.
Mr. Rosen, did you have any input? Because I was aware that the initial email was saying it was from you.
Are you talking to me? So, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I was just asking if you had any input on the matter.
On this specific matter?
Yes.
I think that it was very courageous for you guys to come down and share your stories. I think the work that Mr. Leary's doing is great work. So, thank you.
And I was the guy that asked...
Steve, hold on. Steve, we're just going to continue on here because we've got a long night.
We have Chris Frazier and Dennis Jewell.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Smith. I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be said. There hasn't already been said by the most important people in the room. I did write a speech, but essentially it sounded just like what the students had said about Mr. Leary. And that there is a reason why Franklin High School has closed the opportunity gap for African-American students in terms of our graduation rate. And it's important to always ask the question, how did we do that? Because I challenge people to find schools that can do that. It's really hard to find schools that can do that. And I believe Mr. Leary and programs like Mr. Leary's, we have other programs at Franklin as well, partnerships that do support the decrease in the opportunity gap for our students. And it was just our concern. And it sounds like we're all in agreement, but our concern was that we were going to lose that program. And perhaps, exactly, I don't know how that confusion occurred. But we came here tonight and these students stayed here until ten-thirty at night. This young lady stayed here with these young men to speak to something that means a lot to them. And I hope programs like this are always a priority. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Smith. I'm Chris Frazier, Vice Principal at Franklin High School, along with Mr. Jewell. And I am going to read what I prepared tonight. In that, I'm giving a different perspective than that of the students, that being of a school administrator. The I Am Academy under the leadership of Ray Leary and Victor Bannerman have helped Franklin High School students of color with answering one of life's most difficult questions, and that being, who am I? Students involved in the I Am Academy have the opportunity through mentoring and self-reflection to define themselves and set goals for the type of person they wish to become. Through backwards planning, students set their sights on college and career goals and receive guidance on the necessary steps it takes in order to make these dreams become a reality. The I Am Academy brings positive energy, resources, and most important, hope, to a historically underserved population. Mr. Leary and Mr. Bannerman have assisted our students with securing employment, developing leadership skills, restoring relationships with teachers and staff, establishing relationships with colleges and other community agencies, and lastly, becoming leaders and positive members within our school community. Mr. Leary and Mr. Bannerman do more than just meet with our students, they get involved with their lives. And again, their testimony spoke to that by monitoring their grades and attendance, attending athletic competitions, dance performances, poetry slams and school assemblies. Our students better understand the meaning of the term wraparound support as they see it in action each week through these efforts. As a school administrator, I fully support and rely on programs such as the I Am Academy to address specific student needs within our school that sometimes our budgets cannot meet. I truly appreciate your time and look forward to the continued support that this program will receive in the direction that it's going. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I just have to add my thank you also. Thank you all for coming and telling your story tonight. And Ray, thank you for your decades of work with our students because it has made like a big difference for all of us. And it matters that you come and tell a story like this tonight and wait until ten-thirty to tell us as we're launching into a budget conversation because this is what it is all about. And so, you ground us really specifically in why we do what we do. So, thank you for being here and committing to coming and making that happen for us.
Our last two are Suzie Bartley and Ray Leary.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. As a National Human and Civil Rights Award winner, as a teacher who's had eight Gates Scholars in the past five years in my classroom, I'd like to testify to the absolute necessity of I Am Academy to Portland Public Schools. Mr. Leary is a true professional, an exceptional collaborator. He is a mentor for me. As I depart from Franklin High School to Grant High School, I'd like to ask for the continuation of services in all of the current schools where he operates and the expansion of services to Grant High School. I feel that the success that we can have together there will truly amaze you and I hope to be back to share that with you. Thank you.
First, I appreciate your patience and the patience of the young people that have joined. And again, I'd like to extend my gratitude and appreciation for the sacrifice they've made because I know full well what they will be facing early in the morning. Side note, in a somewhat bizarre meeting that I had with Mike Rosen, we talked about the need to really show accountability. And as a real estate developer, I mentioned to him that I thought it would be much more valuable use of his time to track that construction budget than to be chasing us down the back alleys. And after the report today from the Bond Accountability Committee and the Capital Improvement Bond Report, it made it clear that the darks, big dark hole, the sucking sound, is not the programs in the Equity and Partnership Office. It is on your construction sites. And I think you got enough information for, so for those of you who did not understand that development speak, that real estate speak, your contingency is shrinking. You won't have the backup to fix it. And all you need is one banana peel before you are in deep. Second, as you listen to the Capital Improvement Bond Report, I hope you understood that your costs are only doing one thing, they're going north. And when you talk about competing with other construction sites for workers, you're also talking about paying a premium for that. So, with that, I would like to begin my official comments. As past president of the Urban League of Portland, co-founder of Self-Enhancement, Inc., and current senior member of the Merck Commission, and as a dedicated educator, I feel that Portland Public Schools Board's indigenous contract review process led by Board Member Mike Rosen reveals a less-than-forth-right portrayal of his intentions. The fact that this purported district-wide review involved only one contract at the time, a contract designed to support the most vulnerable students in our district, African-American males, many of whom are also sped or academic priority students, is at best dishonest and at worst racist. It is quite revealing that a few white men who sit with him on the board, none of whom have questioned his crusade, would arbitrarily know best how to effectively address the historical inequities that children of color have lived under for decades. This unprecedented targeted approach to contract review demonstrates an attempt to cover up significant policy issues with regards to civil rights in this district. Rosen's approach is paternalistic. I'm not paying attention to that.
Don't worry about it.
And reeks of a marriage of choirboy and plantation politics. In truth, his intention seems to dismantle and discredit the first honest attempt within our district to address the historical disparities that have led to the federal sanctions and scrutiny this board finds itself under. And Chairman Kohler, I would hope that you would not let your board fall victim to this influence. As the longest-serving member of the Portland Metropolitan Exposition and Recreation Commission, I voted on millions of dollars worth of contracts during my twelve years as a commissioner, millions. And any review process necessary was focused on fixing the policy, not managing the contractor. Nor did it penalize those served by it for our lack of progress. Never have I witnessed the use of such egregious plantation politics to address this concern. This methodology appears to be in full play at our most recent board meeting. The cornerstone of this century's-old stratagem is simple: divide them and conquer their aspirations. Although tried and true, this brand of cronyism, marked by an immature unwillingness to stand apart from the other choristers for what is right, nor rebuke that which is unjust, is generally employed to dismantle any gains made on behalf of people of color, and in Rosen's case, underserved students of color. This systemic silencing is effective because a self-pronounced leader always emerges, one who is willing to align against the greater interests of our community, only to be paid with a picture in the paper or a soundbite in the news, but more sadly, most often with pieces of ink. And most of the time, they look just like me. Fortunately, in today's world of social media, this approach will not function. It will, it will ultimately backfire on the architect and his operatives. I think the African-American community as a whole needs to know that Mike Rosen is proclaiming himself as a leader, creating an arbitrary review process that specifically targets a successful program that serves boys of color, and also attempting, attempting to position himself and the board and members of the board as district leaders who have completed, undercutting the authority of district leaders who have completed doctoral research in equity and education and who themselves have navigated this system as people of color. If Mike wishes to claim the responsibility of Assessor, then he must also be fully, he must also claim the results of their choices. With generosity of spirit, I forewarn them that their choice to challenge or abandon the support of African-American boys served by the I Am Academy will invariably produce different results than they wished, as they continue to underestimate the role of service provided at the multiple high schools. In his historic speech in seventeen twelve on the banks of the James River in the Colony of Virginia, British slave owner Willie Lynch marked that when it comes to breaking the uncivilized Negro, use the same process as used to break a horse. Take the meanest and most restless Negro, strip him of his clothes in front of the remaining female and Negro infants, tar and feather him, and pull him apart in front of the remaining Negroes. While Willie Lynch's incendiary oration exposes a brutal practice of a different time, the scene still has metaphoric acuity that relates to the predicament at hand. As my name is sloshed through the mud, my contract released to the press before I'd even seen it. Serving hundreds of young men of color throughout Portland, and I continue to serve their families, many of whom trust me as a light on the murky path to collegiate success, observe the public bullwhipping I have taken due to Mike Rosen's paternal investigation amid national news about Portland's homeless crisis due to gentrification in our black communities, a program that serves students of color, many of whom are busing at five-thirty in the morning and an opportunity to attend a breakfast at seven AM just to commune with other African-American students while learning to contextualize their situation and navigate their path to college. It's tied between two, or not two, or is it four? And Mike is the coachman step, ready with the lash. Speaking professionally, this should have been a process addressed and resolved with district staff or with and by the contractor of note me. Instead, Mr. Rosen requested the opportunity to attend a session through a mutual friend to visit us at, at Franklin. After observing, he fraudulently, he fraudulently claimed in a memo to district staff, and I have it, that he observed multiple contractors working for me while in the meeting. That is a lie. What he observed was Franklin staff who woke up early in the morning to join these young men for breakfast. They were not contractors, they were not employees of the I Am Academy, they were employees of Portland Public Schools. In fact, Mr. Rosen glanced up from his phone, which was, which was the real focus during this session, to observe other PPS staff members, all men of color, who also came to work early to convene with and support the boys of color and who attended our session. The false assumption that these were my employees and the willingness to use this observation in attack against me is further evidence of the continued fright created when professional black men convene on behalf of the next generation. The men in attendance were not my employees. They were unpaid, and they were there to help the young men of color continue to show up for the opportunity to experience feelings of success while they were in our sessions. Equally troubling is the obvious discrimination used in the review process, for it did not include the entire lot of district contracts. It focused purely on the office of equity and partnership. And as I repeat, if you were really being diligent about costs, you would be tracking that construction budget, because that's where you're losing millions. Yet it is clear to me that his intent was not to review the broader implications of the process, as it was to establish the horsemen in their positions and to ensure that I, as a black man, understood my place and that you, a privileged few white men, feel the need to hold the reins and manage the service delivery model of a population in a community that you only relate to through patronizing acts of self-serving rewards. If left alone in the room, brimming with young men of color who are eager to learn life skills, they wouldn't, they, life skills that they need to survive and thrive, they would cower in the reality that you are ill-equipped to even converse with a community that is so culturally different from you and so repulsed by the decadent privilege in your very mannerisms. The youth have not learned yet to lie. In closing, these arbitrary machinations under the guise of review process have created for me a never-ending question. Mr. Leary, when are we gonna start? Can we keep doing this? Are we gonna be around to do it next year? The hundred-plus I Am Academy participants must wait, watching as the nooses hum. My only choice, as articles have come out, is to use this disrespect as a lesson in self-management. Still, they wait for information regarding how Portland Public Schools Board will respond, and they are watching to see what I do when I am pinned against the wall. And I want to make it perfectly clear, I want them to understand that courage is free. You don't have to put a price tag on it, you just have to be willing to tell the truth. Lastly, let me, uh, state this, unbeknownst to our participants and their parents, the schools and the principals we partner with, as we as the general public, we, the I Am Academy, are being held hostage by a group of men led by Mike Rosen. For the record, they will defensively retort, he's pulling the race card, and then they will return to shuffling the deck. If that is the case, please join me in my professional assessment that this debacle and charade, let the henchmen come down from their post to be unhooded as public officers, let them stand in their choices as silent partners, defenders, or leaders of the hunt. Let them answer for the actions against me, most of all, against the young men who eagerly await the opportunity to learn in an environment that exceeds, that exceeds standards of cultural relevance and is wholly an unapology empowered in black. As Portland emerges as a major U.S. city, leaders will need to consider how to eradicate the rampant racism that resides between the bike lines, the flower beds, and on both sides of the river. This is prioritized by the reality that many white Portlanders wish to pretend that they're interested in exterminating this vector while they hold tightly to their grasp on political, economic, and social capital. We may be separated, segregated, marginalized, Chairwoman Brown, policed, scrutinized, but from northeast to southeast, from MLK to the numbers, we are here. We have learned to communicate, in many ways, we continue to be one broken heart that keeps on beating. Will this community, after surviving Vanport, housing covenants, school segregation, and busing, of which Board Member Buell made a lasting contribution to this community, which leaves us somewhat baffled that he has not put Mike Rosen in check, knowing that he was working against the work that you have already implemented? Will this, we are ready to take our place as respected members of this city. The city itself cannot claim to be a place in a global marketplace without acknowledging and changing this treatment of us. In that, I thank Mr. Rosen and his operatives, whether they live in glass towers or whether they live in resort homes, for their willingness to demonstrate and act hatred, act, act out hatred toward me, for though they lack understanding of their important cultural relevance, they provide a high-quality snapshot of the operation of white male privilege. In closing, let me say, my grandmother always told me, a hit dog will holler. So when you hear the questions, when you hear the refrains, I'm appalled. I can't believe, how dare you? He played the race card. Follow the barks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please do.
So, I think what I'd like to do, that is, the will of the board here, um, is take some, uh, if you have amendments, we can consider amendments. Okay. And then we can, uh, vote on them and... I have an amendment that I'm passing out. It's two amendments. Uh, this amendment was provided to staff on Monday, but it wasn't included in the packet for consideration, so I'd like to read it. So this is to the existing resolution, and this is Amendment One. The Budget Committee directs the superintendent to develop an intervention and support system as described below and allocate no less than a million dollars in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget, and an additional five hundred thousand to be considered in the January budget amendment. Adhering to the district goal of, quote, "every student by name," the superintendent shall build and propose a three-year plan for all students, not at grade level, with effective in-school supports and summer school options, so that every student performs at grade level and graduates from high school with nine college credits, three APRIB classes or dual credit, and CTE. The superintendent will identify the total number of students who need supports and acceleration and create a detailed plan for the board's consideration by July thirty-first, twenty sixteen. These funds shall supplement and not supplant content or proposed funding. Incorporated into this plan will be the district's implementation and associated funding of the Students' Bill of Rights. The Budget Committee directs that unfilled central office positions, travel and dues, and subscriptions, and non-student expenditures be prioritized to fund the plan. So that's the first amendment. The second amendment is, the Budget Committee directs the superintendent to provide textbooks, materials, and supplies for every class offered by PPS. This shall include materials and supplies for any new programs or curriculum mandated by PPS, for example, CPR for all high school students. Prior to the start of the twenty sixteen-seventeen school year, the superintendent shall report to the Board Business and Operations Committee, but no later than August twelfth, there's a typo here, twenty sixteen, on the status of this directive and request additional immediate expenditures for any supplies and textbooks that cannot be covered by funds already allocated for the adopted twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget. So I don't know if you want to take those separately? Yeah, I think we want to take them separately. Um, and, uh, let's just go with Amendment One. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
I want to proceed with discussion, but I'd like our other board members to be present. You go get them. Thank you.
And let me tell you, we have one more person who is supposed to testify.
Oh, great, okay.
So we have her do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Hello again, we met last week at Madison High School. My name is Sarah Chuplin Tran, and I'm a mother of two young children who I hope one day would, um, attend the Vietnamese Dual Language Immersion Program, and I'm here to speak on behalf of current and future families in the Vietnamese Dual Language Immersion Program. That means it's starting?
Yeah.
Um, many of us were present at last week's board meeting. Um, we were pleased to, to see that the revised budget has a line item for reinstating the FTE for the Vietnamese immersion program. However, with a caveat that we interpret means that enrollment needs to increase for that line item to go through, I'm here tonight to ask you to seal in that line item, to release at least one FTE for the first grade class for the program. The Vietnamese Language Immersion Program is a pride and joy of the Vietnamese community and is a valuable asset to the school district and the neighborhoods. Um, what does, what do the cuts mean to the classrooms? It means, one, class sizes will increase, the first and second grade classes will be twenty-eight, twenty-nine students in the classroom, and, two, there will be just one full-time teacher teaching English to both first and second grade classes. Can you imagine being that one teacher who is responsible for fifty-seven students each day while managing two curriculums for students who are learning a second language? That's a recipe for failure. Um, I just have a few points that I want to quickly bring up, um, of the, the detrimental, detrimental consequences, um, of not releasing this one FTE to the program. One, current families will leave the program due to the large class sizes. We've, I've already heard from at least three families who are considering pulling their child out of the program because of this anticipated larger class size. Further, future families will be deterred from this large class size, which, by the way, is above district average, and frankly, they'll question the quality of the program with this unstable funding. This uncertain program is also causing a critical teacher, Ms. Kim Vorasai, who is a kindergarten teacher, she's considering leaving, leaving the program. She's an excellent teacher, and it's not fair to ask her and other teachers to wait until enrollment increases to know if they're gonna keep their jobs. And losing valuable staff would be tragic for our kids and their, our program's future. So, in sum, I just want to ask you all tonight to please reinstate at least one FTE to the first grade class, so that we can have one full-time teacher in the English side and one full-time teacher on the Vietnamese side, which is what the program has now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
Carol, have we done that? Is that in your budget? That show already? My understanding was it's in there.
So it's in the balance, so we've asked Antonio as part of the balancing FTE, and actually, I'm gonna ask a clarifying question of you guys while I have you here, to just make sure my understanding is correct. So kindergarten is still class, two, two classes of fourteen, correct? We now have a first grade of twenty-eight and a second grade of twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
With an E, a teacher and an EA? Is that correct?
Are you talking about currently or next year?
For next year, planned for next year.
Next year, it's planned to be reduced to, yeah, one?
One teacher.
Teacher with...
With an EA.
With an EA serving both of those sections, so really only half.
It's one EA for both.
Right.
So wait, twen, first grade, 28, second grade, 28, EA for both, one EA for both?
Yeah, one EA will be shared.
Shared between the two and added as a TOSA as well, a point five, a teacher on special assignment to support the whole program? Is that correct?
I don't know about that.
I believe that's correct, too. I'm just going to say, like, what we're going to look at is the whole staffing configuration and try and figure out how we, how we meet this need, but it may be that we are not doing the TOSA, not doing the AA, and trying to figure out, but we'll work with you to try and figure out how we're staffing this. So yes, it's part of figuring out how we solve this, yes. I don't have a, yes, you get one FTE yet. New things were added, so we're working on it within our existing budget with Antonio, correct?
And you think it's doable?
Yeah, and I think it's doable, yes.
We're going to basically do, fix it. We're not going to leave it as it is.
We are not going to leave it as it is. We're going to try and figure it out. I'm just saying, new things were added in order to address what the situation is that may not, like, you probably won't get the teacher, the EAs, and the TOSA. It will be some combination to try and address your needs. So yes, we'll work with you to figure out a staffing.
I think if we don't get to keep the staff that we have right now, we will lose families.
And we understand that.
We will be able to garner more families.
And ours is the tension of doing classes of, aspiring to have you have classes of 14 plus a TOSA plus EAs is a different thing than the standard that we're able to do for everybody else. So we're trying to figure out how do we configure it for you in a way that will work, but it may not be that you get all of that.
We're looking at a class of 28.
I, I hear you.
Not 20.
We're not cutting any place. We're not going to cut any FTE out of there.
It will lead to, at least next year, there will be two less teachers.
I, I understand you.
That's two FTE that we're taking out of the program for next year as it's scheduled now?
Uh-huh.
So are we able to say, we're not going to take those teachers out of the program?
What I'm saying is, we're going to work with them on their staffing configuration to, to, to make, address the issues that you're having. And I'm looking at, on this one, too.
Do I need to make a motion tonight, Dan, about that?
Yes, yeah.
Do I need to make a motion to not take any out of there?
Well, no.
Go ahead, David.
Just to clarify one thing, because this is an immersion program that's adding a grade each year, what we do about second grade is new, so how we staff that is not a cut, because there is no second grade this year. So there's, there's two, there's two issues here. One is, in the current school year, there are 28 kids in kindergarten, 28 kids in first grade. And this year, those are staffed with two teachers in each grade. Next year, there will be similar numbers in first and second, and kindergarten and first grade, and a second grade class. So the first question that needed to be addressed is, do, what do we do about second grade? Do we have one class or two? And what do we do about first grade? Do we have one class or two? And those are two separate questions. And as the superintendent said, part of the response was to place a half-time teacher on special assignment onsite to support those classes. So in terms of figuring out what was spelled out in, this was prioritized by you in the work session as something that we needed to be addressed. We have identified that there is existing, there's a pool of staffing that exists to address issues like these. So that would be the, that's the resource that we've identified. And as the superintendent said, the response is that the Assistant Superintendent, who controls that staffing resource, is going to revisit how those classes are staffed. But just to be clear, whatever we do about second grade is not a cut, because there is no second grade staffing this year.
So a question...
But it may be that we add a teacher and, and no longer have the teacher on special assignment who's not actually in a classroom. So like, yeah.
So the question...
Why are they saying that there's a cut?
There's a cut at first grade?
Yes.
Yeah, and the question I would have is in terms of the timing of figuring this out and the issue that was raised, the uncertainty for the teacher, who can either wait it out and find out she has a job or decide that she's going to get another job because the uncertainty is too great. So how long would it take to work this out? Because this, this isn't the first night we've heard about this.
Yeah. Go ahead, David.
So from a timing standpoint, we concluded the work session with you after midnight on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
We put together the, the documentation and the, the plan and got it to you by the end of the day Friday. The Assistant Superintendent, who controls this staffing resource, has been sick and out of the building, and so we haven't had an opportunity to speak with him about this.
Well, that's not good enough. In fact, we've gotten emails about this long before the meeting on Tuesday. But notwithstanding all the challenge, staffing challenges you have, assuming that Antonio will recover, how long do you think it will take to make a decision?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm telling you is that we will work with this, with the school on figuring out an answer to their question. We're going to make...
Before the budget?
Yeah, before we, before we...
Before we vote on the budget?
Correct. Well, that, which would be tonight, you're...
No, no, but until, for the June 21st.
Yeah.
Well, in advance of that.
Like, we're talking within, we're talking within the week. Yeah, we're talking within the week.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to add that it's been so difficult recruiting new families. We're confident we can recruit new families, but it's been so difficult when they hear that the program's getting cut just two years into the program. Myself, my child is one year away from being eligible for kindergarten. And frankly, my husband and I question the quality of our program with such unstable funding. You know, we don't want our kid to be a sort of a testing kid for the program. So I urge you to please release the FTE as soon as possible.
And that we take, we hear that urgency, so we'll, we'll work to respond, be responsive. Thank you for coming and testing again.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, on the table, we have Amendment One of, of Mike's. And, um, we, is there any discussion before we vote on it? Mike, do you want to say anything?
Well, just, I mean, I, I appreciate that we, well, I guess what's driving me is, I think we have a large amount of data. I acknowledge that we have, well, I acknowledge we have new programs starting that are very targeted to address the achievement gap. But there are two things that I'm concerned about. One is, traditionally, these programs are targeted only to Title I students. And the achievement gap isn't solely, it, it includes non-Title I students. So I haven't seen anything in the budget that will address that aggressively. The second thing is, there's a fair amount, or I'd say a lot of performance data that we've asked for, for months, that we've recently gotten, that you only really need to glance at to see that we have serious problems. So that leads me to the conclusion, in discussion with many other parents, that while these long-term strategies, like, um, the literacy adoption, are working their way through the system, we need to make, um, an aggressive investment in interventions. So that's why I'm asking for this. And the other thing I would say about it is, I, I've been really specific in this, in this First Amendment, that I think we can, we need to develop a plan. We need to develop a plan quickly. This data has been around for a while. And we need to have at least a million and a half dollars to fund it. Now, if the plan shows that we need more or less, I would expect that we would adjust the budget for that. But I think we need some certainty. I think people, parents and teachers and students that are watching this process are expecting us to do something more significant than we've done to date. So that's the purpose of the amendment.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on it?
Not at all.
Yeah.
To me, this, to me, this says, "Reading teachers," but it doesn't say, "Reading teachers." And I'm, I've been talking about reading teachers for three years, that we need more reading teachers for those kids who are out in schools that are not now being addressed by the pilot, about, that are hanging out there on the fringes. Pushing for it, pushing for it, pushing for it. So, but it doesn't say, "Reading teachers." If it said, "Reading teachers, 12, I might go for it." That's about what you got here, is about 12 reading teachers in this whole, in the, in the bottom part, the 500 at the top. So it didn't, I mean, the, the 500,000, but the million, that's 12 reading teachers. So, but it doesn't say that. If Mike wants to bring it back, and say it's 12 reading teachers, I'm game.
Well, I mean, in response to that, the way the amendment's structured is that the district come up with a plan that looks at the existing data that is available, identifies the students, and then interventions that will work. I mean, if that's reading and what it takes to support better reading interventions, that's fine with me. I, I don't know that.
Well, I'm not, I don't really think the district's going to come back with a plan that says, "Reading teachers." That's what bothers me about the whole thing. And that's, if it said, "Reading teachers" right here, I'd go for it. Bingo. Let's get them out there. But...
Well, it definitely doesn't say, "Reading teachers."
No, I know, and it's a, if it did, I'd be voting for it. And that's interventions. That's what we need for interventions, in my opinion, so I'm going to have to abstain, I guess.
Any other comments?
Something similar, I might be voting for it. I like it.
Any other comments? I will say, uh, yeah, I mean, where my head is on this, to, to your points, Mike, we have, we have put more resources, we have existing resources. Acknowledge the, the urgency. And what I would like to do is to take this language here, have it, you know, basically your, your first one, one, two, three, four, five, six lines of your second paragraph. Address that to the Teaching and Learning Committee. Change the date to, uh, September 1, which allows some time to get, to address it. And then take, take that, take the data, take the plan, and the plan then will determine the funding requirements. And then we, as a board, need to be willing at that time to say, okay, that this is, we need to get some more resources into this based upon the plan. So I, I'm...
Sue, just go on.
Go, go ahead.
So, um, this is the heart of work that we've been getting to in the Teaching and Learning Committee, and, um, an issue I have with the way that this amendment is phrased, other than the fact that it is asking us to find a million dollars that we know is not available to us at this time, is that it, it says, "Develop a plan." I agree that we don't have a clear picture of our cohesive strategy around serving our students who are at those strategic intensive levels. We need a clearer picture, but we have been piecing together that most of the pieces are in place. But, or many of the pieces are in place. So I think through the Teaching and Learning Committee, what we want to do is ask staff to lay out for the board the framework of supports for strategic intensive-level students using our early warning indicators, which we have invested in, so we know who these students are. That is information that we have as a district and have at a building level in every one of our schools right now, who are students at this level. To, so to use our early warning indicators to identify by name at each building students who are not meeting grade-level expectations and/or trigger need for behavioral supports. And this framework will include, for us, criteria for identification, building-level core supports with attention to whether or not those core supports are offered equitably across all of our schools. Interventions, so in-school and out-of-school interventions. Culturally-specific partnerships that are available at each building and district-wide. Differentiated strategies for emerging bilinguals and special education students. A tracking system for monitoring effectiveness. And then building-level accountability through our rapid-response teams.
And that's all the components of a comprehensive, multi-tier support system that integrates the behavioral aspects and the academic aspects. And it also kind of does its own program evaluation, too, so we know what's working and what isn't. So that will be a major focus, the work that we do going forward now in Teaching and Learning. It's how we really integrate that.
So what I, um, thank you, Amy and Tom. I like those ideas quite a bit. But what I would suggest for Teaching and Learning, Julie, is that you start working on a policy that actually lays that out. And then when we get to our budget session next year, we'll have the policy that we know where we're going to direct our funds, because this is the policy that we're following. It's the important part about policy governance, which is how this board is supposed to operate. So we need a policy that actually lays that out for us.
So, um, I think we already have, um, identified focus areas this year.
Our strategic priorities.
Our strategic priorities. I don't think we need a policy. I think a policy reflects the operation of, in an effective district. It's another, let's all talk about what we know is wrong and delay taking action. I think the thing that's missing from, um, what people are saying is, we have a lot of data. We know today that we're failing a significant number of students. There's nothing in this budget, in the short term, that will address that. I mean, I would challenge anyone on this board to tell me what the problems are right now, based on the data, that we had to literally cajole district staff to get. So, I mean, I appreciate that you want to put together a plan. What I don't have confidence in is that if we don't set aside money now, and if we don't set aside a very strict timeline, which September 1st is just an excuse not to get anything done next year, it's not going to happen.
I think we have a plan.
And then just one other thing, Julie. So, but given all this discussion, in particular, what you were saying, Amy, so where does that fit in to the amendment? I mean, are you saying...
It's a directive from the, would be a directive from the Teaching and Learning Committee to ask staff to deliver a framework so that we can see an inventory...
Well, it's a directive from the board.
Yeah, I mean, how can...
It's not, it's not anything to do with this amendment. Right.
Well, no, that's the question...
I'm a no vote on your amendment, Mike.
Yeah, no, and that's the question I'm asking, if Amy's amend, you know, adding some perspective on the amendment, or she's just saying, "We don't need the amendment." And then as far as process goes, and I, I think this is what Tom's alluding to, I mean, can, can, can a committee direct the district, or does the committee have to come up with a resolution that the board...
Comes to form.
Yeah, or we, as a body, can, which I hope we do tonight, say, "This is high priority. We need..." You don't like the word "plan," it just comes out of my mouth, but basically what you said was a plan and a framework.
I'm fine with "plan."
Yeah. And, and direct the Teaching and Learning Committee to, to get it to us. If, if, you know, ASAP, so that we can have something that, that lays out where the priority, because, Mike, I think it's going to be bigger than the 1.5, and so then the question is, is where and how we fund it. So that's, it's a step, it's a step-wise process.
I wanted to address the question of where are we addressing the immediate needs of students, and that comes through. That's why we're asking for an evaluation piece that does not wait for a year to see how our curriculum is working for kids. And that, by looking at that very closely, and at least quarterly, I mean, we can do it more often, to progress monitor where kids are at. And from that data, then determine, you know, what, what do the percentages look like of the kids that are actually going to need intervention, which should be lower once we deal with core. And because we have such high numbers of students that are...
And because we have such high numbers of students that are at those intensive levels, we can't possibly provide interventions for forty percent of a school. So, we need to address those issues within core, which is what we're trying to do. So, I think that we have actually a sequential plan of how we're going to start addressing all of the, the needs of all of the kids, and it's not leaving anybody behind in the immediate future either. We have some interventions in place. We have interventions throughout the district. I think it's really, first step, is looking to see what we have in existence, and then looking to see what we need to supplement. I don't think we have a really good sense of what there is available yet. So, I think that we wanna go kind of in, in a real, planful way, um, as we proceed to make sure that we are meeting those reading benchmarks for all kids.
And I just wanted to add that, aside from the literacy adoption as, you know, a very significant, um, response to our core needs, we're also really doing meaningful work in terms of behavioral supports and the process, the IBB process that we just went through around student discipline. That is, you know, next month, we will have delivered a full inventory from every single school on their school climate that will help us put all the pieces together in terms of what are the behavioral, social, emotional supports that our students need. And then Julie can finally have that conversation that she's been trying to have for eight months about that RTI framework, which is academic and social-emotional supports integrated for all of our students.
So, Julie, we had this discussion earlier, though briefly, and I, and I, I don't understand how you can say that there may be forty percent of our students out there that need interventions, and because of that, it's too many to help.
Nope. That's not what I said. I wanna...
No, I just, let me, that, I just...
No, no, but I wanna clarify that point, because that is not what I said. So, don't misinterpret what I say.
I'm not trying to misinterpret.
That's why I'm trying to clarify for you.
Well, I haven't even, I haven't even finished what I was saying. I mean, you, you know, that, I just wanted to finish my statement, and I was, in fact, asking for clarification. So, since I can't remember what the rest of it was, you might as well clarify.
Okay. Well, it's not what I said, because what I said was that the issue is not about interventions for forty percent. It's that it has to be addressed within a gen ed setting, because there's a, a big proportion of our students that need specific kinds of instruction and unspecific skills. That has, you can't find enough interventionists with bankrupted districts at those levels. So, we really need to take care of core and provide maybe different and intensive instruction within a general ed setting. I wanna say, I have seen these across the country. I mean, I'm not only experienced with what this may look like here. I mean, I work in districts where this works. They've put some other pieces into place, like a literacy block, where we, you just kind of reshuffle people so that everybody's an interventionist during a ninety-minute block. I mean, there's things that we can do that actually is not, it's pretty cost-effective. But we need to really make a plan first before we start saying we're gonna target this amount of money for something that we're not quite sure what that means yet.
So, Julie, in terms of the amendment, then, are you saying that you would support a plan being developed within a specific period of time? And then identifying or allocating the funding needed, needed to implement those interventions? Because that's what I think Tom is saying, versus saying it's gotta be a million or a million and a half right now. I mean, that's what the amendment is.
Right. And I think that, personally, I'm not in favor of it right now, because we went through a really long, lengthy process of determining where our funding spots were going to go. And I don't know where to find a million dollars in a place that I would like to switch.
You're misunderstanding me. I'm saying if you put aside the million dollars and you focus on what you're saying, which I think you're saying, but verify, a plan... Tom's proposing to change the amendment. He's proposing to take the money out and to instruct the superintendent, within a fixed period of time, to come up with a plan...
Through the Teaching and Learning.
Yeah, of course, that later, the board will have to decide how to finance. So, that's, I, so I'm just kinda calling the question. You have my amendment on the table. We have Tom's...
Well, that's a good question. We can vote on it.
Do we want to direct the Teaching and Learning to create an inventory and a framework of supports, both core intervention involving partnerships specifically targeted to disaggregated groups of students?
I liked, I liked what you were talking about, Amy. I liked Tom's. I think if you strip the money out, I don't understand why it's here as a budget amendment.
That's exactly right.
Because there's no money on it right now. So, to me, it's something to teach...
It's a bu, it's a budget note. It, it, you know, you call amendment a bu...
Well, it would have to have something to do with money, though, Tom.
It, it, right, because it's gonna come back to us with a money question.
Maybe. Maybe there isn't any need for more money on it. Maybe we use the program that we already have in a different way.
That's part of what we need to find out. Exactly.
That's, which is why we wanna give direction tonight. Go ahead.
My understanding is that's what we're doing, that plan. And that's why I'm kinda hanging still on to what I said, was if we're gonna send it out there without a plan, money out there without a plan, which I'm okay with, then the plan is that we put reading teachers in and teaches kids over behind. That, that is a very effective and probably the most effective thing we can do with that money is that plan. Now, if we wanna put it all together in plan, which is what we're trying to do, then that's what, and that's what Julie says we're, and we're doing, and the stuff she talks about makes really good sense. I know Mr. Rousseau was in that, but you wanna spend money that's outside of that, fine. Twelve reading teachers and that, anybody, anybody pick the school. It doesn't make any difference what school you've sent them to, basically, in this whole district, because there's plenty of kids that can't read well, who can use those reading teachers to catch up. So, I'm just, yeah, asking the superintendent or Rousseau or anybody to make another plan. Is we have a plan. You wanna spend some more money to help the kids who aren't in the plan? Send some reading teachers out their school and teach them to read. Bingo. We're gonna help a bunch of kids.
Every teacher, reading teacher.
Well, yeah, but they're not all that skilled.
Okay. Um, I think we've had enough discussion on this. Uh, Mike, do you wanna...
Well, I think what we, what I would suggest is we just vote on the original amendment.
Okay. Okay, good.
We can op, I can offer an alternative.
Okay. Um, so, all those in favor of Mike's Amendment One, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, by indicates saying no.
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 Uh, any abstentions? One abstention. The motion fails. Vote of two to four with one abstention. And student representative, is it?
No.
No, okay.
So, then, can I suggest a, a different amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm gonna pass out a different amendment. Oh, so, just so you know, the Second Amendment, still, we haven't discussed. This is a different version of the First Amendment. So, you can use this sheet for when we discuss the Second Amendment. So, um, I don't have to read the whole thing, because it's just editing, um, what I had, what we just discussed, according to what I think Tom was saying. So, it would leave the first paragraph, but that would read, "The Budget Committee directs the superintendent to develop an intervention and support system as described below and allocate, in the 2016 budget, an additional amount identified by the 73116 report below." So, what that does is it instructs the superintendent to do the data analysis, provide a strategy and a plan, goes through the Teaching and Learning Committee. We get something, um, by the end of July, and we vote on, hopefully, to appropriate the funding that's needed.
So, I'll tell you from the experience I've had with working in other districts at creating these kinds of frameworks, that's not a timeline that's even manageable.
What, we, can you suggest a manageable timeline, Julie?
You know, I mean, it's taken some districts. I mean, we have pieces of it, but, I mean, it's a month, year process for many districts. Um, there's a lot of, of data...
We've been working on it, though, haven't we, a little bit? So, the year seems extreme to me. But, I mean...
I'm seeing what I've seen in other districts.
Yeah.
There has been some movement. Um, I'll leave it to my esteemed colleague for, I mean, he knows more directly what, um, the work has happened, but your department...
I wanna be clear that this amendment in front of us does not call for a plan. It calls for an intervention and support system, as though we were creating it from whole plot.
Well, I'm not sure what that means, Amy.
As, as though we don't have one. So, it, it's calling for the creation of a, of a system, not, not...
Well, I mean, I would wanna clarify that I'm not denying that there are existing supports or even plans for additional supports, and whatever we would do moving forward would incorporate that.
Right. Yours, Amy, I would consider your language to be added to this thing. I mean, it's, it's really the...
It's an integrated framework.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it would take a lot of work.
Can you, can you give us something more than that? Like, is it a year? Is it a month? Is it two months?
So, I can speak from my own experience. I have not done it in a month. And typically, it's a collaborative process. And it has taken over the course, I would, I would say, a year, anywhere between six months and a year. And in doing that, the pieces that have been in place that we don't is we had a clearly articulated core program. We had a clearly articulated, um, strategic and intensive, uh, level of support system. So, when those are all defined, you can make the decision-making rules. You can set up the PD. Like, we were just talking, just anecdotally about, yes, we have interventions out there, and we have them in our Title I schools, but we don't know which ones we have and where they are. And we don't know if we have the supports within the department to even develop the teachers, to teach them how to use it. So, there's a lot of inventory and kind of assessment steps, like survey, to set the, the groundwork to move forward. But to Julie's point, we, we are starting that way. It's, we are going to build a multi-tiered system of support. We are going to have decision-making rules. We will have interventions established that we can support. And then, the intent would be to have those available to the entire district, not just Title. I'm sorry, it's, it's not a substantial answer, but a July 31st timeframe is, it would be difficult extremely. And it would be done almost unilaterally. You know, we would just kind of, basically, kind of peel our best thinking and put it out there.
And, and as we know, I mean, we've seen the power of collaboration and having, you know, buy-in from stakeholders. I mean, that's part of the process. Something else to potentially consider with some of the administrative vacancies we have is perhaps adding somebody that could really focus on helping us develop that, too. Just rather than, I mean, we're probably short, short-staffed, you know, maybe we need to plug that hole, too. And that's part of the questions that we would be asking.
So, maybe to, what we could do, and this would take the summer, is establish what we do have. Tie, like, initial decision-making rules to that, and kind of refine that, and then build off of. I think that's a doable piece, you know, and that would be with the summer.
For Teaching and Learning.
Okay.
Figured out in Teaching and Learning, because this doesn't have a certain priority.
Top priority.
So, I put an amendment on the, um, table. Is there a second for it? Well, I just wanna vote on it, but, you know, so, I mean, it's fine if there's more discussion.
Yeah, call, well...
Well, I just wanna make sure there's no further discussion first.
I have a clarifying question. Is the date still July 31st, um, your amendment?
Well, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna propose the change, I'm willing to consider that.
Can't do that?
Yeah, you can. I mean, you can, you can amend, you can amend it. I guess...
Amend, amend the budget after July 31st?
Well, Pam, I think maybe what you're saying is there isn't a feasible time to get what I want, based on what Chris said. So, that's, you know, I understand that. But I'm just saying if, what I, what I would clarify is whether Julie thinks if we push that July 31st deadline back, I'm open to suggestions that, you know, she would be favorable to the amendment, so...
I'm just not even sure what her timeline would be, frankly. I mean, I think it's work that has, it's, it's process work.
And you maybe just asked, you guys could go figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, let us figure it out. I don't know yet.
So, we're talking about, um, well, I just, I think, um, the question that I'm calling is whether anyone has any changes to this amendment that was just seconded. If not, and there's no further discussion, well, let's just vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, where, um, what I would like to do is to take these words, take Amy's words, direct them to the Teaching and Learning, take up, um, Chris, uh, on, on what he said, and bring, bring back Phase One to the board by the end of the summer. And at which time, we, we will have a discussion that will involve whether we would, uh, you know, we can have a discussion about a budget amendment at that time. So, that's what I'd like to do, and I don't know if we need to, I, I think the intent of, of the board, if, if we've got clarity...
I hear what you're saying, but we still need to vote on the amendment.
Okay, well, then, let's vote on the amendment. So, all those in favor... We can have discussion, because what I'd like to do is, just as the intent of the board directed...
I think I'm finally starting to get parliamentary procedure. I mean, I feel like this has been a growth experience. Did you wanna discuss it more, Amy, or should we go on it?
Well, I just, my, uh, what I wanted to say relative to the amendment is that, you know, I would vote no on this amendment, because I don't want to, um, identify in this moment, based on this language, exactly what we wanna do. I wanna have a rich and complex discussion in Teaching and Learning about these issues, and figure it out, and end up at a directive about what we wanna see, when we wanna see a first deliverable that is reasonable. So, I'm...
Are you, are you thinking in terms of adding on to what we're doing?
What do you mean?
We're doing, the program we're building around the adoption. Are you thinking in terms of adding on some, that the adoption is over here and that program?
No, the adoption's part of it.
Okay, but, but I thought we had that, we don't have that put together?
The adoption.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying is, I'm still not, I'm still confused, I'm agree with Amy that we should discuss it, but I'm still confused of what even we are discussing.
Well, let's just vote, and then we'll...
That's why you would send it to the committee for the conversation. Yeah, we will further discuss.
So, at Teaching and Learning, I promise I'll have my best minds there.
Can we just sort out the amendment?
And we saw tonight, you've got some pretty good minds.
Okay, so, um, voting on the, on Mike's amendment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
No. Abstain, abstention, um, the amendment, it fails by a vote of one, two, five, with one abstention and...
No.
Okay. Um, but I, I do think that it's, um, that, that the intent of the board is clear.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, we're gonna do the work.
And, and, but we're bringing it back September.
Can you just, for the record, state what your expectation is of the Teaching and Learning Committee?
Yeah. Uh, the, my expectation of the Teaching and Learning Committee is to, um, work with staff to come back to the board, um, at the begin, at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, um, with Phase One of a plan, which in the minimum includes identifying, uh, students, not a benchmark, what, and what we have in place, what we have in place, um, and what we, what further work needs to get done. And it's my expect, expectation at that time, that the board will have a discussion... And it's my expectation at that time that the board will have a discussion about the timing of a budget amendment to deal with it.
And to me, the really important part of that at the front end is the inventory, which I know is already underway because that's going to tell us where our gaps are.
Okay, so can we take up my second amendment at this point?
Yep.
So wait, do I have to, I read both of them. Is anyone seconding?
Is there a second to Mike's amendment on books? Second. Discussion? Steve?
I thought this was already in the budget.
It is.
It is.
It is.
And we believe we can cover it. And this basically gives us the ability to come back to you if we have requests that exceed what we're able to do.
Can you show me where it is? Because I don't see it in the budget.
So we have a memo of clarification from David Wine on May 20th under use of funds. We have textbooks and supplies. The Office of Teaching and Learning will find funds within the textbook budget to address needs in schools for the fall. And will also consider requests for supplies. In the case of supplies, staff will review schools' consolidated budgets to see if carryover funds are available to address these needs. So saying we will meet the needs and we will do it from our teaching and learning.
So if that's the case, can we add this language to the budget document? Because this language says, basically, not to offend anyone, but come hell or high water, starting the first day of school, 2016, 2017, every student will have a textbook, whatever their grade is, for their class, if they don't have one. I'm on a roll here. Could you just hold on a second? Every student will have a textbook or whatever book they need, whatever grade they're in, for whatever class they're taking. They will have whatever supplies they need, which would include things like lab supplies. For new courses like CPR, we will have the texts and supplies. Period.
That's what the amendment says.
But I want to know if we're not going to, we're having a discussion on the amendment. And so Amy has said, this is covered already in the budget. And I want to hear Chris tell me that we have a guarantee that every student will have the textbook they need and the supplies they need for their courses. Because I wanted to remind people that a couple of months ago, we barely could vote $100,000 for missing textbooks and the demand was a half a million dollars. And that wasn't for the whole need. So that's the question. I just want to make it really simple. Every student has a textbook and supplies for whatever class they're enrolled in. Will we have that on the first day of school? Chris?
Gotta be no, because the kids don't have it.
Steve, let, you're out of order there.
So I can't tell you that because I don't know what is in every building. I can give you the answer based on the information that I have right now. IRC, who does textbook purchasing, has done a brief analysis, meaning just printed out what was in our system, of what's out in the buildings. This doesn't tell me what the actual need is. It just tells us what Central has bought and deployed into buildings. So given that information, I asked them directly, can we supply or purchase enough books for every core class? They said they believe they can. That does not include special classes like CPR, accelerated learning, all those what we call one-off classes. This is just for core classes, to include consumables, like lab supplies.
Okay.
They believe they can and they have a budget for it.
Well, so I just want to say, I want to reflect back what I heard.
Okay.
And what I heard is, a subset of students, taking a subset of classes, will have textbooks and consumables or associated supplies. But we can't say for other classes that don't fit into that definition, which are classes students will be taking for credit, it's classes that are mandated apparently, like CPR, they will be on their own to provide the course materials. And if it's a family that can afford to buy the course materials, that student will have the materials. If it's a family that can't afford to buy the materials, something will come up. Like, what I've heard in the teaching and learning committee, some students will be directed to an online text, which this student from Roosevelt High School happened to say was incomplete. And she also happened to say that there were kids in her class who had parents that had the means to buy the textbook. So I just, I want to be really clear about this. Every student, a textbook, not a subset of students and a subset of courses. So I'm reflecting back that the answer is no. We cannot guarantee that on the first day of school.
So can I just read the other part of your amendment? Just because, Mike, I think you cover it here, where you're asking us to respond and fully meet the needs of people who are asking us for textbooks, but to report back to the Business and Operations Committee by August 12th on the status of this. And if, in fact, we need to request additional immediate budget expenditures in order to meet this demand, we come back and we have that conversation. But we are believing we can fulfill it within what we've got right now. We just don't have the complete inventory.
Well, that's the purpose of the amendment.
But you're putting in here the provision to come back, report on it, and be able to ask for more if need be.
I mean, it sounds like you're saying that you understand the amendment the way I understand the amendment.
Yeah, and that's the way I understand it is why I want to vote yes on it. Let's vote on it.
Okay, well, that isn't what Amy said.
Well, let's vote on it.
That's what I thought you were saying. That's what I'm clarifying.
Clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Steve, and then let's vote on it.
Wait, can I back up one second to just?
Sure.
There's two words in here.
Did I understand what you were saying, what I just said to you? Is that what you think you're saying in the amendment? I'm sorry, I just didn't get.
Yes.
Yeah, Carol, I thought it was a perfect summary.
Okay, that's what I'm asking you, okay.
There's two words in here. There's textbooks and supplies. And I'm against resolutions that aren't clear.
Me too.
Supplies, you got, if we, supplies, there's paper, pencils, erasers. We have, send out lists and say, here's your supplies you send to school. We want to eliminate that, the supplies you would send to school. We want to eliminate that. We're not talking, we're talking millions of dollars, probably. Forty-seven thousand students, multiply it by a bunch. I mean, we're talking a lot of money. We want to do that, fine, but then let's do that, not do textbooks and supplies. I'm just saying, let's, I'm suggesting a friendly amendment, that you pull the supplies out, do the textbooks, everybody gets a textbook.
No, we're talking, so that's a good point. I want, I, okay, it's a great point. What I've heard, which I understand, because it was the same thing when I was in high school, like, if you took a lab, you had your textbook, you had a course, like a science course, like physics or chemistry, you had your textbook, and then you had your lab kit.
Right.
So the lab kit.
But that's not called supplies, that's what I'm saying. That's called your lab kit. Supplies are like if you bring your pencils, your paper.
Well, we tried to call it, we tried to call it. Course materials. It could be course materials.
I, course materials works for me. Okay, change it to course materials.
Okay, supplies, that's a friendly amendment accepted. All those.
Materials. Way to go, Steve.
Yeah, hold on, Pam.
I can't figure out what the number is that we're putting in the budget, the dollar figure. Is it staying with this dollar figure?
Some members of the board, I'm not clear as to what needs to get done by August. There seems to be an action.
I know there is no number. Which I'm trying to figure out, it's a budget amendment. What's the amount of money we're talking about?
Right.
Do you need a number?
No, we're not adding money at this.
There's nothing.
It's a contingent.
So what's the?
It's a budget note.
I hear, can I just say what I think it says? I think it's saying people are coming and making sure that, asking for whatever textbooks they need, where by August 12th, we're coming back to the Business and Operations Committee and saying, we could fulfill all the requests, everybody's got the textbooks they need as they start the school year, or we're still short these and we don't have the money. Like, we've expended all the funds. We have, we need more money. And we come back and we have the conversation and we make the request for the funds we need to fulfill this commitment. Am I right?
And they would report to the Business and Operations Committee.
To Business and Operations. So we would basically come, and I don't know if that date is a right date in terms of when we would do this.
What's my date?
A complete inventory by August 12th is just not feasible.
This is what, I mean, I don't, I, we've been asking this question for a long time. I mean, my suggestion would be that we simplify the request in terms of an inventory. I mean, I'm trying to think of how, a reasonable way to approach it. And a reasonable way to approach it, I think, Chris, would be, what are the courses being offered? Let's just say high schools. So, and what are the textbooks and what are the supplies? And do they exist or not? I mean.
Yes, and I don't want to make this overly complicated. I would only be able to tell you on a printout what we have bought centrally and what we've deployed. There are items that buildings have bought that I don't know about, that I would have to send individuals over, like with the accelerated learning inventory. I sent people out to do that. And that took a couple weeks. As I recall, it was about a month. And that was just one little subset.
Well, again, the goal, Chris, is to be able to say to the parents and everyone else, the students, the teachers, the taxpayers, that every student's going to be able to start school 2016, 2017 with the textbooks and the course materials they need. And if what you're saying is that's an impossibility to guarantee between now and a report on August 12th, I think that's unfortunate. I would just say, do the best you can and give us a report on August 12th because I want to have time to be able to figure out what the response is. Maybe the response will be that you can provide it for all the classes that are starting in the fall, but not the ones that may start mid-year. I mean, that's fine. Do the best you can.
I'll get to work on it.
Okay.
Great.
All those in favor?
Is there an amendment?
There's an amendment. And we're about to vote on it.
Okay.
So the wording I would put in, Tom, as I would just say, after textbooks, it would say, and course materials, cross out materials and supplies.
Okay.
Every place else that shows up in the amendment.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't look.
It's multiple places.
Okay, so anywhere that we have materials and supplies, we would just say course materials.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? The amendment is passed, seven to zero. Student Representative Davidson voting aye. Okay. Two down. How many more to go?
That's all I, yeah, thank you.
One question of the superintendent, see if I have one, and then I have another one which I'll ask about.
Okay.
So let's do the question of the superintendent. I want to make sure that we have in the budget, the swift, two things, really. But they're both in the same block. The swift thing, is that in there? Is it the same answer? But I mean, are we going to tell, we got to tell the swift people this week whether they get the money or not. Can we do that?
We can do it, we can give the answer within the week, yes.
Okay, and the answer's going to be yes to them. You pretty much figure it out, all right?
We all agreed it was a priority.
People agree it was a priority.
Okay, the second, the second question, then I have my own resolution. The second one is on the recruiter.
Yeah.
Okay.
That doesn't appear to be in the budget.
No, because it's not, it was in the December amendment. What we're going to, yes, we're working to figure out how to make it happen, which may be that we are putting a different position into the December amendment, right, in order to hire this one sooner, that we post another one. Yeah, and go ahead and make a motion on that one.
Go.
I move that by, that someplace in this budget, we have one FTE set aside to recruit from, out of the HR department. And that's the recruiting where we recruit early and we have, and then we, and hire them and put them in behind.
Sean's really clear what your vision is on that one.
So let's just put, I'll just redo the amendment to make it more clear. I move that we have someplace in this budget, one FTE for a recruiter. In this budget, that means by July 1st, we could be hiring.
Okay. Is there a second, Steve? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
What is, what is the amount designated?
Be about 120,000. They've been doing 120,000, but.
If I understand this correctly, it's moved.
Yeah.
So I see it, got it, got it.
Moving it from the green over to the yellow.
Which means we'll move something else over into the yellow that right now is.
We have to.
There'll probably be a vacant position that we just won't fill, that we'll move over and delay filling it until the amendment and do this one first. So that's how we would go about it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Because of late night, I'm not going to make a speech on that.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions?
To hire another recruiter?
No, the recruiter. The recruiter who goes out and recruits hard to find people.
We're talking about adding a position or moving a position?
It's in adding.
Adding a position.
Adding a position. That was listed in the amendment.
So are you yes or no, or abstinent?
Well, if it's adding a position, no. If it's moving a position, yes.
I'm going, it's.
Okay, so we're.
Okay, we're.
It could be moving.
So it's, okay, six to one.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
No, that's fine.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Six to one with Student Rep Davidson going aye. Steve, what else you got?
Okay, here's the resolution on the library books. I'm going to go into first one. Library book resolution. During the next school year, 2016, 2017, each school will spend a minimum of $6,000 from their consolidated budget on library books and materials. It could be and/or materials. Minus any funds spent for library books and materials, over $25,000 total during the last five years. If money is available, the district will make an effort to backfill schools' consolidated budgets in addition to spending some central money on library books and materials during the budget amendment process.
Okay, it's, is there a second, Steve?
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion?
Okay, I have a question.
It's your resolution.
Let's start with a question.
So is it this, this sets in December budget?
No, no, this is in the budget as it goes, bingo, and we are buying the books now.
And the money comes from the.
And the money comes out of.
So you're again asking us to move from yellow to green?
No, I say it doesn't cost us anything. It's us.
We're not leaving yet.
Nice try, Tony.
Dollars out of individual schools' consolidated budgets.
Yeah, the superintendent could have done this without the board vote. So, okay, so I have a speech? Glad to give it or not, it's quite.
No.
Good.
But Pat, email it.
Then if it doesn't, if it doesn't vote, I'll expect, if it doesn't pass, I'll expect somebody to make a motion to redo the motion so we can, I can give the speech. Fair enough.
So can you read the amendment again? Can somebody read the amendment?
I'll read it.
Please.
Library book resolution. During the next school year, 2016, 2017, each school will spend a minimum of $6,000 from their consolidated budget on library books and materials. Minus, it's a little tricky though, minus any funds spent for library books and materials, over $25,000 total during the last five years.
So I just want to ask one clarifying question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Julie.
What are materials?
Whatever the librarian, whatever the teacher librarian decides on, and it comes out of the library budget, library budget. It's vague because it could be anything, it could be online books, materials. It could be basically whatever you would buy in a library. I just don't, some want to spend most of the money on books because that's what they need. Some other libraries need magazine subscriptions, maybe some need, whatever the library, it's $6,000, you spend it on your library where you think it's smart. And hopefully, the superintendent will ask Susan Stone to.
Are you talking about books and other literacy materials to find?
Yeah, that's what I.
Well, whatever's in the library on their budget, you know, maybe they might even buy a chart. Anything that you would buy for a library.
So Steve, on that second part, are you saying if the library has already spent $25,000 on this, on books and materials in the past five years, they don't have to spend the $6,000?
No, then they, then that's what you should have been spending.
Right.
You should be spending about $500,000 is the bottom that we should be spending in our district for money, which comes to about $10 a student. Where our schedule is to spend 40. 40 cents.
Yeah, I just don't understand what that second part means.
Okay, what it does is, if they spent $25,000, they still know '06, because this is the new year. If they spent $28,000, then this year they only have to spend $3,000. And the point is, you've got some people who have quite possibly been spending on their library, and this is intended to fix those libraries where they have a mess. So, we're acknowledging that they've done that. Fine, you've done that, good, you've taken care of it. And it's not going to be at poor schools. It's going to be at well-to-do schools, maybe, that they did that. It's just kind of, this, you can argue this 25 different ways.
And then explain that...
I could argue them all up and down. I thought this made sense for where we are right now. Next year, we should have a whole different ballgame.
Explain the last part about what happens at the amendment of adding something back to the consolidated budget.
Oh, yeah, in the, in the budget amendment, if, it would be up to the superintendent of the board to, we're, we're having the intent to say, okay, look, we're taking this out of your consolidated budget. We have this thing we need to fix. So, we're now taking out of your consolidated budget, but guess what? If we come up with a bunch more money, we're going to try and give you some back in your consolidated budget.
Okay.
I like the approach because it's not a one-size-fits-all. If you've already bought a bunch of library books, you're not going to be mandated to do it out of your consolidated budget. Or am I wrong, David? Because I saw you win.
No, you're right.
For context, we have small K-5 schools whose consolidated budget is about 30-something thousand dollars. $6,000 is 20% of their consolidated budget. It's a very large percentage. I would respectfully say that having a set dollar amount per school is problematic because you've got Harrison Park or Beverly Cleary with 700 or 800 kids whose consolidated budget is 60, 70,000 dollars, and you've got Whitman who's with 250 kids whose consolidated budget is 30,000. So, $6,000 per school is, is, I think, problematic because it's going to be a, it's going to, that much money for small K-5 school is going to be a massive thing to deal with. If it was a percentage of their budget, then that would be more reasonable because, because it equates more closely to the dollar amount per student that you, that you referenced.
If we would like, I can address that at much length, and I can address other options, and I can address why this isn't equitable. I can spend a lot of time on it. I'm just, the basic reason is that you want to assure the smaller schools, that's who we want to have buy library books. The point is not to take money out of the thing, it's to buy library books and to buy enough that it makes an impact on their library. You have to get enough money in to make an impact, because books cost, you know, we, George Middle School spent $500, $500 buys you 32 books. Okay, that's all they bought out of their stuff for years. We want them to do that. If we want to later on go back and say, okay, we'll add some consolidated budget, we'll take from the rich, give to the poor, whatever we want to do, we can do that. I can, I can do it right now, and I can give you a system, but I'm telling you, it's, I've thought it all through from beginning to end. Right now, this system is workable.
Okay.
May I offer an amendment? Or, should we get a vote on this? I would like to propose that we take the suggestion in our budget that looks at the carryover from consolidated budgets and sweeps a third out, and we pull together all of that one-third funding from all of those unused consolidated budgets, and we designate that to the discretion of our library TOSA to buy books for our schools that need it.
Brilliant idea, but we've already swept that third.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Steve.
Also, that only gets us about $200,000, and this gets us close to $500,000.
Okay, I'm going to call the question on this.
But it's, I'll just say we swept it, but it's part of funding your other ads, so you, you may or may not have accepted the ones that you've got here, so...
Let's vote on this, Steve. All those in favor of Steve's amendment signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
I vote aye.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm concerned about the $6,000 in the small schools.
I can, I can work with you on it, Pam, and explain it to you.
He really wants seven votes.
I know, I, I know, I know what you're saying.
You see what I'm trying, I'm trying to get enough money there to make an impact.
You can't change the budget, thank you.
Can't, why don't I get an impact?
Yes or no?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Good vote.
Six to zero, one abstention, Student Rep Davidson voting aye. Okay.
I'll send my speech out tomorrow if you want to read it.
Okay. Yeah, I do. Pam.
Okay, so, I'd like to move the grant writer from yellow to green. It's an estimated cost of 110,000, and staff has given us a conservative estimate of a grant writer being able to generate about $500,000. So, the way I read it, that's adding, what, $390,000 to the budget if we move it into January. Oh, yeah.
Second.
Wait, say that, give me that logic again, Pam.
I need to clarify that for you, because that logic doesn't hold.
Yeah, I would say so.
Because the, the money that the grant writer raises is raised for whatever it's raised for.
Exactly.
It doesn't offset the 110,000 dollars that the grant writer costs. We're still out the 100. It, it doesn't pay for itself.
Can we choose not to pay the grant writer? Can we hire someone who won't be paid unless the grants come in? Can we do it that way? No?
Julie, no, it's against the law.
Either, either way, we still have to pay them. We're still spending the money.
But if you've got a grant for administration or capacity building or those kinds of things, then it would pay for the grant writer. And I could see a very, I could see a grant for capacity building, especially if we used a grant writer in our small schools who don't have anybody who knows how to write grants.
I just happened to have a conversation with someone today at a large foundation who asked me to submit a letter of intent within the next month for exactly what you just said.
Well, I would be...
Hold on, hold on, sorry. Paul.
I did just want to say that I don't think that we, I don't, I know that such grants are few and far between, but I think it's a very good idea anyway, and I think we certainly need a second grant writer.
Lots of grants.
I would suggest that we see if there isn't another unstaffed position, the funds for which we could move over.
I agree with you, Paul. I mean, I would support the grant writer if we used an existing vacancy to fill it. So, that would be my amendment.
I think we're trying to create funding sources from thin air.
That's a friendly amendment.
I mean, I think it's incumbent upon us, and I said, I think we're trying to create funding sources from thin air.
So, on the, on the subject of unfilled positions...
I mean, vacant positions, is that what you're saying?
I will tell you that in the, in the relative time available to us after midnight on Tuesday before end of the day Friday, we, we, we went through this exercise in order to identify some things that we felt that needed, that based on what you had said, we should try and find a way to fund, and those are the things that are in green. And then we had to find money to pay for those, and that's the stuff that's in salmon pink at the bottom. And staff reviewed all of the vacant positions in, in central office, the majority of which are in the process of being filled, or we've been unable to fill them, but we have somebody contracted to cover those positions. But we did identify two positions that superintendent felt we could eliminate, and that is, that's the $260,000 that we're using to pay, already pay for the other things that are already on this list.
So, David, on the ones that you said are already in the process of being filled, could you tell me what that means specifically?
It means they're posted.
Okay, so, it also means that you could close the post, you could send a nice letter to everyone that has already applied and say the position's no longer available. So, I don't, I mean, you know, you're not compelled to continue with, you know, the process of filling those vacancies. You could interview 20 people for each position and decide not to offer the position based on budget constraints. Of course, you know, that would be a lot of time for nothing.
Really, I don't really think it's necessary to, to put this into a existing position. The person...
Well, I just want David to answer the question first. Excuse me. Are, are you able, do you, is there some law that requires you to continue to recruit for posted positions?
No, it's not, it's not a legal requirement, but it was the judgment of staff, including the superintendent, and correct me if I misspeak for you, was that when we reviewed those positions, the issue was, are these jobs that we need?
Right.
And, and the ones that we're recruiting for are positions that we need to fill.
Yeah.
The ones that have stood vacant for a certain period of time, or there are other factors that, that we felt comfortable eliminating those positions.
Sure.
The other ones are jobs that we feel like we need.
And I have to say that I asked months ago, I started a spreadsheet for staff when, again, I had to insist several times that I was provided the information for vacancies. So, I've asked for this information for a long time, and what I'm hearing you say, David, you and Carol have decided that those vacancies are essential positions that have to be filled. And my message is, that's not enough information for me. I want to know which the vacancies are, I want to know how long they've been vacant, I want to know why they're essential to be filled.
Haven't we given you that?
No, you have not.
The vacancies?
Who's given?
You have made, you have made, you have made a unilateral decision based on limited information you've given us, that you have vacancies that are essential to fill. The question I asked, what vacancies do you have? How long have they been vacant? So that we could have a discussion about whether those positions need to be filled, or we reallocate the savings or the position to another higher priority. So, you know, that's, that's the information I want. I think that's what I've asked for. I think, you know, I appreciate, David, that you've been working nonstop since Tuesday at midnight till today.
Thank you.
But I, I've asked really simple questions, and I'm not getting answers to them, which impedes my ability to make budget decisions. I mean, yesterday, well, let me just give an example. I spent two hours on the phone yesterday trying to sort out whether or not we were providing additional funding for the Portland Workforce Alliance. At the budget hearing on Tuesday, actually, I don't know, it might have been during the day or at night, we specified that we wanted to know what it was going to be funded at for next year. After a lot of back and forth, the answer was, yes, it was funded, but the information I provided in the table that you got on Friday or Saturday didn't reflect that. Sorry. So, this is the cycle we're in. This doesn't allow me to make meaningful budget decisions. So, I'm not satisfied when you tell me that you've decided that your remaining vacancies need to be filled. I want to know what the vacancies are, how long they've been vacant, and why you think you need to fill them. And then, the board can meet its fiduciary responsibility and decide whether to reallocate that money or reassign those positions. That's what I think our role is.
Steve.
I don't think my...
Steve, sorry, I'll get back to you, Julie.
I think Pam has a wonderful idea here. It was great, and we should figure out a way to fund it. I think it's really critical through our school district in a lot of ways, and she's right on the button. We could always go back to the quarter time, the quarter FTEs that are our EAs in our most, our most well-to-do schools and pull them out of there. They were just kind of put in there willy-nilly anyhow, so we pull them out willy-nilly. That's fine. I mean, that's what actually happened. That's how it actually worked. Someone could ask me, I'll explain it, how it actually worked in more detail, but that's how we did it. So, there's a, there's, there it is right there, those four, quarter time.
Okay. Julie?
I just would like to call out, I think it's insulting to say that when we have a concerted strategy to serve our students, that it's willy-nilly. I just need to call that out.
Okay, but it was a willy-nilly strategy, trust me.
Okay.
I'm calling it willy-nilly because it was.
I forgot what I was going to say now, but basically, I think I've just come to the point where I still would expect respectful dialogue to our staff that has worked night and day to help get us the information. So, it is late, and I know everybody's tired, and we're all short right now, but we can be respectful, and thank you for all your work.
It's also good to be kind of truthful.
Thank you. But you, one can be truthful without being hostile or rude.
We put them in with no plan. Would that make you feel better?
Your dialogue.
We had no plan when we put them in to really do anything other than just putting them in there. We can do that, that's more truthful.
So, I'm going to call the question on this, on, on the grant writer. All those in favor of Pam's amendment?
Can you read the amendment? Can somebody say what the amendment says?
The amendment is to add the grant writer now rather than waiting until...
With new funds.
Move the grant writer to the green list.
Yeah, to move it to the green list.
With new funds.
I don't under, what is new funds? What is that?
Well, is it a new position or is it an existing position?
It's a new position.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. The, Julie, sit down here.
Oh, I had aye.
Okay, great. Okay, so, passes five to two with Representative Davidson.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay.
Okay, I have a brief one. Very brief. Everybody should love it.
No such thing. I'm sure we can get some reason not going to pick a discussion about it.
Oh, please don't make me laugh. The boards received a request from the group Parents for Preparedness for $50,000 to begin work on non-structural seismic hazard mitigation. While we appear to not have the funds for making this a line item, I ask that the board have the superintendent add a memorandum to the budget instructing maintenance to begin work on non-structural seismic hazard mitigation. Out of the existing maintenance budget, such work to be in the amount of $25,000, and I'd parenthetically add, I believe that we should reassess this work when we look at amending the budget in January.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
We have discussion.
Is there any discussion?
I, I support this, but I also think that this is a great example of something that would be a very viable grant request.
Any other discussion?
I, I would suggest that this kind of thing go into our capital bond rather than, we were already doing seismic improvements in our schools, and I know that our maintenance, as you know, Paul, because I saw that you were pushing for, what is it, Lee, who had the theater rigging? We have such a long, long list of maintenance projects, I would hate to see any of our money go toward that when we have this other alternative, so, thank you.
I don't, I don't think that we can put non-structural on a bond.
Oh, is it non-structural?
Yeah, non-structural.
Attaching bookcases and stuff like that.
I'm still...
Making sure that the clock doesn't fall on Steve.
And can we make sure the clock's on time also when we do that? Okay, any other discussion?
All those in favor of Paul's amendment on, do you want me to just read it, read it again?
Have the superintendent add a memorandum to the budget instructing maintenance to begin work on non-structural seismic hazard mitigation. Out of the existing maintenance budget, such work to be in the amount of $25,000.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Vote, amendment passes six to one with Student Representative Davis.
Aye.
Voting aye. Okay.
Okay, I have something quick.
Go ahead.
In the spirit of believing that what we have on our list tonight, that we are not, that we are unable to fund in the budget that we adopt tonight, I'm assuming that this list carries forward and becomes our prioritized list for budget adds in January. So I did have an add that didn't show up because it was a little late, I think, but I'd like to put it on here for, for prioritization in January, which is the addition of four floater custodians who would be able to cover custodian absences, because we currently do not have any way to respond to schools when custodians are absent. And they either take from the high school, or they go without, and it's a small ask, it's $140,000 for four positions. I'd like to see it prioritized with our considerations in January. Should we be, should we be fortunate enough to be in a position to do that?
All right.
I would like to second it, so that we can discuss, or, I'm sorry, Amy, are you proposing that as an amendment?
Yes.
Or just, okay, you are, I second.
To add to the gen, the amendment list.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, Steve?
I have a list of five things to add in this spot, I just think we should, no, I'm just saying that I have a list of five things, I think we should put this off for another meeting that we're going to do down the line and prioritize down the line.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be in the-
That's, that's fine.
I, I-
Hang on to that, bring it back, and we'll discuss it, I'll bring mine.
I rescind my amendment.
There we go.
Okay.
Can I make a request or two? Will you guys do some kind of positive statement about affirming the green list, if you're accepting the green list? Do something that gives us the direction to do that, right?
Would that be part of the budget?
Like, affirm that you want these, us to go do the amendment for those things, if you're accepting them.
But isn't that part of the budget?
Yes.
It's in your budget amendment.
As amended.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not yet, this is the stuff you added, you're adding as of the 17th.
So the stuff, the stuff on the list-
This is your action for tonight.
We have to approve it.
You have to tell us.
Yeah, it's not in the-
And we'll bring it back to you for the 21st.
Okay.
Whatever stuff you tell us tonight, yeah.
So we, so we need a- Shall I offer an amendment?
Yeah.
Sure.
So I propose-
You're asking us to do that.
That we add for our 2016, 2017 budget, the proposals in green, with their designated costs.
And didn't we include the grant writer? Grant writer, HR recruiter.
And the grant writer, and the HR recruiter, as our additions to the approved 2016, 2017 budget.
Okay.
We need a second.
Small green stuff.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, okay, then moved by Amy, seconded by Julie. Discussion?
Clarification. Excuse me, can I clarify one thing on that list? So, right now, we have $200,000 for the-
Academic interventions?
Yes, thank you. We have $100,000 placeholder to start work on the TAGX stuff. The next item down, which is, which is the four additional site support instructors. We, as of late yesterday, we have an opinion from staff that we cannot use Title I funds for those. So we are, we're short the money for those positions at the moment.
So that takes away a source and-
It takes away a source of funding for those. So the question would be whether or not those stay in the green column, or move into the yellow column until we can find some more money. Because at the moment, without funding for those, and the things that you just added tonight, we're short $630,000 of funding.
Yeah, I did just become aware, thank you for bringing that up, that we can't fund those positions through Title I, and I think those positions are critically important. And, in the scheme of things, it is not, it is an add of $400,000 to this budget, it is not a net add to, of $400,000, because these are substitutes, these are full-time teachers who serve as substitutes, so it-
But it is, it does cost us more money, because it-
More than it would cost to deal with subbing.
Yes. It's not-
But could you, like, approximate, I mean, is it, like, less than an FTE costs more, or?
Well, it's also the fact, frankly, that because we're so short of subs at the moment anyway, it even further reduces how much money we save by doing this.
That's true, because this is to cover those places where they can't get subs.
Right. So, I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm not belittling the value of what it is, I'm just clarifying that from a, from a fiscal point of view, we don't actually save a huge amount of money by doing this.
Right, right, right.
Because of, A, it's more expensive than subs, and B, at the moment, we can't even get the subs.
So we need to allocate a source for that need. We need to figure out a source for that.
My clarification was, is it still in the green column? Our, our initial recommendation was, it's green if we have the money right now, given that we now know we can't use Title I for it, our recommendation was that we move it into the yellow column.
You mean, you talk about it in January?
No, I mean, I-
I'm just asking the question so we have clarity about what it is we're doing.
I'm not, I, I think it's critically important.
Do you have an idea?
We had, we just had a, you know, we just saw the data in, in our bargaining process the other day, about how many absences go unfilled in these high-need schools, and it's a daily occurrence. And not only is this, does this put a teacher in the classroom, but it's a teacher designated for the building, so it ends up being someone who knows the students, knows the teachers, and really ends up being an educator for that day.
Right, but where would you, it sounds like we have to find-
Right.
$400,000, because we can't, yeah.
Where would you suggest that come from?
Can you take that out of the staff, or that we put a set aside for enrollment balancing in the fall?
That's going quickly, people-
I know it's going quickly.
That's like a tax return you keep spending over and over and over again.
I do have the marijuana money coming in.
There you go, Steve.
About, I figured out it was over a million dollars that we should get from them.
When?
I don't know when they're sending out, but we're getting out over a million more than we kind of we thought.
We have the urban agriculture students, too.
We had 43 million in taxes instead of two or three million. Today's newspaper.
So can I suggest this, since it's-
You can suggest something, that would be welcome.
Since it's 12:25.
Almost there.
What we've asked you to do, happy Wednesday, what we've asked you to do is to vote, to approve the budget as it's published here anyway. You've identified a number of items here that you want to add. We've identified four ways to partly pay for those. We'll come back-
Keep working on it.
Okay.
We'll come, you know, give us a week to figure this out, because they-
Right, we have other issues that you're coming back with us on as well. So this would be one of them. Yeah.
I think it's critical, but I'm fine with that.
So we're agreeing that between now and June 21st?
Well, significantly before June 21st.
Just tell us what the date is, so we know.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that covered, let's just vote on that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just, hold on, are we voting on the budget now?
No, we're voting on the green additions.
Minus the $400,000.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, the amendment passes six to one with Student Representative Davis.
Aye.
Voting aye. Okay, now we're going to vote on the budget. So the board-
Oh, speak to the budget, I had a brief statement.
Good, let's do that. Paul?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the motions, we have a motion on the table already.
And it's been amended with the addition of that one?
Yep, yep, yep.
Right.
With this budget, I am afraid we are violating the principles set forth by the Community Budget Review Committee and adopted by the board. Those principles were making budget decisions on the basis of data, basing our resourcing decisions on cost-effectiveness, prioritizing the core program in all schools, critically reexamining patterns of spending, providing every student with equitable access, taking a long-term perspective, being transparent, and most importantly, providing students with an exceptional educational experience, and ensuring their academic success should drive, I'm sorry, the budget process. I'm afraid I think that our budget process is broken. As it is, the time the board spends on the budget in total, I think, is comically short, even though at this moment, I'm sure it feels unbearably long. And we not only have far too little time to assess, and far too few opportunities for public input, but also far too little scope with which to work, out of an approximately $600 million budget, a budget larger than that of the city of Portland. The board has, by my count, been struggling over some total amount less than $2 million, or approximately three one-thousandths of one percent. I believe that we are seriously under-investing in supports for our historically underserved and high-need students, both in terms of outside programs and institutional supports, and in terms of our own academic programming. Our poorest schools continue to go without critical resources, our sped inclusion continues to be seriously under-resourced, yet the process is so contrived that the board cannot weigh established funding against these needs, and so they go unfilled. With this budget, we are also approving outside contracts without evidence that they are or are not effective, and some we are approving while they are under federal investigation for civil rights violations, and we have not discussed that. Ultimately, we are not making decisions on the basis of the priorities the board adopted in March, but rather on gut feelings and political horse trading, and I include myself in that. And we are allowing ourselves to be stampeded to judgment. I think it is imperative that this board spends the next year, and I mean the entirety of the year, significantly revising the budget and its process. That must include an authentic and honest zero-based budgeting year, and the conversion of our published budget book from fund accounting to departmental accounting. The current fund accounting budget is not just impenetrable to the average citizen, it is impenetrable to accountants and finance people. As board members, we are supposed to be bringing our life and professional experience to the business of the district, and as a finance professional, I certainly cannot in good conscience put my name to the process or its product. I think that what is in front of us is neither reasonable, rational, nor an effective way to manage public funds for the benefits of Portland students, and I will vote against it.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for your time.
I have a statement, too, but I'll wait if somebody else has a statement.
I have a comment.
Steve?
I think horse trading is as bad as willy-nilly, and so I would think you guys should be jumping all over Paul for using the term horse trading, right, my good dear friend? I just, I'm saying that we're talking, people on the board should be able to say what they think without people jumping on them, that's supposedly what the case has been, and so horse trading, how terrible, Paul, how terrible. Thank you.
Does anyone else?
Yeah, I just appreciate a lot of what you said, Paul, and I agree with a lot of what you said. In particular, I have felt that this was a somewhat undisciplined process that was not clearly guided by our priorities and by the framework from the CBRC. That said, however, this is our process that we own, and we started this, I mean, I agree with you that I think it's a good idea to spend, start now, reforming the process for next year in meaningful ways. But that said, this is a process that we started at the beginning of March with a budget framework, and we all subscribed to this budget framework at that time. And then, we only began to engage more deeply after, several weeks after the superintendent proposed her actual budget. So I agree with you that the process in need is in need of reform, but I think that collectively we need to own the fact that we did not seek to make any changes to the process when the original framework was introduced.
My point is that the original framework was introduced far too short, or far too close, to the point when it was due. There's no way that we could revise the budget.
Yeah, and I would, I would add to that, that at several points, I asked for more information sooner, I'll talk about this, and for the process to be revised, and simply put, we were stonewalled by staff, and I'll include the superintendent in that. So, do you, does anyone else have any comments?
No, my comment was, Stonewall was getting pretty close to willy-nilly and horse trading.
Okay, thanks, Steve. The thing, this has been a really incredible learning experience for me, and I guess I felt like everything, starting July 1 in 2015, leads to this important decision. This is the most important decision the school board can make. We have three responsibilities: review and approve the budget, set policy for the district, and supervise the superintendent. And, but the most direct immediate impact comes from how we allocate money. July 1, this budget hits the ground, and it has an impact on all our students. So that's why I take it so seriously. This is a portion of an email I sent out to people that I've been working with on my recommendations for the budget for months. So I just want to start out thanking, there are a lot of parents, teachers, and community members that I've talked to about the budget with as much information that's been available to me, and I just want to thank them, they know who they are. And I'm sorry that we've had, we definitely have some victories, but there are a lot of things missing. So I agree with what you said, Paul, all of it. I would describe this process as being unnecessarily opaque, under-resourced, and inaccessible to the community, and specifically, I would say hearings and work sessions were haphazardly scheduled, and there were not enough. I would note that even though this is the most important decision that we'll make this year, here we are at 12:40. We had 11 items on the agenda tonight. The, the priority of the budget is reflected by the fact that this was the ninth agenda item, and we're here at 12:40. This should have been the first agenda item. This is where we should have the most vigorous, vocal, insightful, in-depth discussion. And the placement of the budget on the agenda tonight just personifies the problem that this board and district leadership has. As I've said, important budget information that the board has requested for months was never provided, and some of it was provided at the last minute. Information provided by PPS was presented in an unnecessarily complex and convoluted way. There were literally, as I said before, times when it was clear to me that PPS staff that provided the information to us couldn't decipher it. The budget document itself is close to incomprehensible to the average reader, and the average reader is our target audience. Not accountants, not financial managers, but it's encouraging to hear, or let's say reaffirming, that even financial managers can't figure out the budget. So here are some of the victories, but I would say that they are too little. $100,000, though not nearly enough-